How are you doing?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Yep. But yes, there's always the two of them.
That's wonderful. Look at that stacked up for weeks on end there.
It's gonna be weird not having Jeff on every day.
So much work. We're almost a whole year together.
We're moving the days.
I think the pandemic space and Jamie and Jeff is always complaining of things that haven't been flying and stuff.
Wait, what's up? You're shaking your toes, right?
Oh, okay.
Was the game pack on the security and network guy?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. All from
smart to do it in advance, but what do you guys, uh, leave it on? On your
Twenty second.
So is that before or is it? No, it's after the next CSA. CSA is Thursday.
I think so.
Is this Thursday? I think so.
I need to see.
I think you could probably
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I was out of town and just didn't even, I was like, yeah, whatever. Just be here, please. I mean, and other stuff going on, but yeah, it is Thursday, so if you want, I can just take it.
Who is that my kind?
I haven't talked to her about that, but I'll see what I see.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep her on some
Alright, sounds good. That's easy.
Oh, yeah.
So easy. It's nice.
All you did, you have Monday and a Monday too, right? It sucks.
Seven in the morning.
Yeah.
Literally left work on a thirty minute window.
Yeah.
I can do the last two meetings on Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just looking at my schedule to
You're not supposed to look at the down and all of them personally.
Yes, for you, sure.
Oh, I'm gonna put my phone on Do Not Disturb though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That gets me in trouble when I think start vibrating and doing crazy
Sure.
This is biggest about
I always do that just so it's silent and I have it here so I can like see if it's an emergency or something, but I don't like
Looks like I read my packet on my phone.
Jerry, I have this up here.
And I take notes on my packet and I want to take one.
Alright, one more time. How it's so tiny. It's so tiny. How do you do this?
This is what it is so far this year.
I mean, I've, I've read it on my phone, but it's not my preferred method because the screen is so dang small.
I know, but
I mean, even if you blow up the type, you're going like this.
Take back on the couch.
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do that with a laptop.
You haven't lived to read two hundred and seventy-five pages on your phone.
Oh, gosh.
Well, we'll have to, uh,
No, mm-mm. Hard pass.
Two hundred and seventy-five pages on your phone?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, he's crazy.
If it's
I don't, I don't get it.
I don't think I can.
I use my Chromebook. See, you can sit back and it's so light. You could like just lay it anywhere.
We do it that way.
It's much easier.
And then
Right, okay.
Even
But I can Easy now.
Well, the Chromebook goes anywhere too. You just download it.
That's alright.
I mean, we don't have to have internet.
That's probably the area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, Jerry, you ready?
Ouch.
This is all those in there right there.
That's it?
Dan, are you ready?
I'm not that popular.
Are you ready? Dan?
This is my third year
I would think just
Dan, are you ready?
Oh, my goodness.
Ready?
That's that year.
Yeah.
I think every once in a while it is full staff.
Alright, everybody, let's, I'm gonna call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to, to order. Candy, if we could have a roll call, please.
Beal?
Here.
Bolling?
Bolling is here.
Lish?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Dish?
Here.
And one?
Here.
And that can be our good.
Okay. Alright, we'll go down to three, which is approval of village board minutes. And it looks like we have a little, little, uh, something a little different. Staff recommendation regarding the two twenty twenty minutes. Uh, we're looking for a motion to acknowledge that the January twentieth, twenty twenty, and the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, village board meeting minutes prepared by the village clerk's office are the official, uh, minutes of said meeting. So I'll take a motion in a second for, for that. Amanda and Mike, okay, any discussion? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how do we end up with minutes from a year ago? I mean, we're approving minutes at the next meeting. How does that work?
I, I think the staff just got behind, so we're trying to catch them all up.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Um, let's see. Candy, should we take two separate? Cause we had different people at the August sixteenth and, and March fifteenth?
You sure, Candy?
Okay, so for the March fifteenth, it looks like Amanda, Jerry, myself and Luke were, attended that meeting. So if we can have a motion in a second for March fifteenth, we'll take care of that. So Amanda and Luke, alright, any discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then on the August sixteenth one, it looks like we were all here. I think Carlene was, was absent, but if we can have a motion in a second to approve August sixteenth, Amanda and Luke, okay, any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public appearances. Public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including both items on and off the agenda. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to address us? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. Very good, alright. We'll go down to four B, which is a request for development incentive within tax increment, district number four, for proposed bike and brew development. And I think, uh, Dan, this is Dan and Jamie, you guys wanna come up? Kinda state your name and where you guys live in the village.
Good evening. We're, we're gonna tag team you guys here. Um, Dan Bertler, Supreme Structures, representing Jamie Bush, as well as sits here. Uh, eight fifty-one, Liliana Terrace, Oregon, Wisconsin, is where I reside for the last twenty-three years.
Okay.
And as I have just been in, uh, you guys all know Jamie Bush, uh, eight six nine Raven Court, Oregon, Wisconsin.
Okay, you wanna take it away?
Sure. First of all, I appreciate everyone, uh, sitting down with us. Um, Jamie is, I'm gonna fast forward this. Everyone saw the tax incremental finance and manual in the packet and everyone knows the project that we're looking at right east of HQ headquarters. Okay, alright. So the reason we're here tonight, right off the bat, we went to plant commission for informational last week, Thursday, and everyone absolutely loved the architecture of the building, the fitting of the neighborhood and what it looks like. So we're, depending on what happens tonight, we're looking at going forward with the plant, uh, plant commission for the next time as a formal, um, meeting. Second of all, time is of the essence. And I start that because there's in your letter that I, that I wrote to everyone. We broke up our TIF requests in two parcel, two portions. One is a fifty-five thousand, one thirty-two, and the other is about, um, what's the dollar amount? Eighty, eighty-nine thousand, eight sixty-eight. Um, if we had tackled both those as two separate issues, the fifty-five thousand, one thirty-two, and everyone I saw should have the soil borings that were done in conjunction with headquarters. Basically, we all live in the village and we, everyone knows that our soils are not very good. And we've had, this lot's been vacant for a long time. And without some upfront money to make it a buildable lot and get it on the tax roll, we need some help. And that, everyone should see a breakdown of the fifty-five thousand dollars. The other portion is a combination of what is reality in today's world. Um, our gap is absolutely even higher than what we're showing tonight, but that's strictly material costs from two years ago when we previously looked at this project to fast forward to today, just not even subcontract, hard cost in general. Um, portion of the eighty-nine thousand dollars, we'd like to put towards our pump track, which is just north of headquarters. That is, has an existing detention pond. Um, I do know there's some issues with that pond that the village also wants to take advantage of and do some correcting of that pond and do some improvements on it. So Mr. Bush would like to actually take that and work with the village on a great landscaping plan and create a, basically a place for people that can ride a bike, come in and pump track. I'm not, I'm not the pump track type guy, so I'm gonna let Mr. Bush talk about that. Um, I think my letter really lays everything out about the TID in general. It's TID number four. Right now, it's a vacant parcel. It's creating seventeen hundred dollars a year in property tax. And this TID does not expire until two thousand thirty-four. Big picture, once this project gets built, you will literally double your tax increment, tax base by just doing this project. Double. And that's not even talking about the people that are coming to the community to drive for a specialty beer. That's not talking about what the bike episode is right now with the creation of e-bikes and family. One thing the pandemic has done is if you look at National Registry of Parks, they're overwhelmed. Families are getting out and about. Families are going and doing outdoor exercises. If I ordered a brand new bike today, I might get it in two thousand twenty-two. You look at e-bikes today, that's exactly what we're looking at. We're seeing bike maintenance. We're doing e-bikes where you can do destinations. You could go to New Glarus as a family and come back. Um, all GPS driven and between the bike maintenance, the e-bikes and the specialty brewing side, it's not a distribution brewery. It's a very small, one barrel, three barrel specialty beers. And it's really given, gauged in the big picture as a family gathering, work on bikes, take a bike home as a family, have a good beer. You want some food, headquarters is right next door. Um, and you'll have the ability to actually order food right from Bike and Brew and they'll walk it over. Um, Jamie, do you wanna talk about the pump track at all and how you're seeing that or am I missing anything else on my side?
Well, uh, the pump track is just something that my kids really enjoy. We go up to, uh, like Stevens Point, we'll stop there on their way and they, they literally go up to these like tracks that they can go around on. And this would be, I thought, a great utilize, utilization of this space, cause right now, as Jeff actually contacted me a while ago saying we'd really like to clean it up. Sorry, I'm fogging up if I talk. Hold on one second. Uh, so it's a, it's just, I think it's something, again, that gets people out and about. I mean, Dan and I are both avid bikers. I mean, I actually met him through Ironman the year that we did it. And what I've really started to see in the last couple of years is, it always used to be something where like if I would say to you, hey, let's bike too, cause he said, we do a fat cat roll, go to New Glarus, come back. Our wives have to meet us there because they don't wanna bike forty-five miles. With these new e-bikes, they can just hop on and they can ride with us. I mean, my wife can anyway, and she actually beats me. But it's, some of the other friends that we have and it just, I, I've been amazed by, we actually did a Milwaukee Brewer trip where we had multiple people going all the way from Oregon to the, to Miller Park on the trails on e-bikes. And they were people that had never biked more than like an hour. It's amazing stuff. So I really feel like that's the future. So this, the, the bike shop that we're trying to design here is really centered around people, um, utilizing this new technology kind of on the front end so we can kinda be the place that people come for specialization of e-bikes. And because regular bike maintenance, like I just volunteered at the Oregon Kids Triathlon, I watched a kid, uh, have their pedal fall off and I had to try to replace it on fly. I had, you know, chains falling off. Uh, we were, you know, pumping up tires cause people were like, I don't know what the PSI for my tire is supposed to be. And so you have all these moments where you're just like, this is, not a lot of people really have a ton of knowledge about this. And then if you start taking that and you extrapolate out like, hey, we're gonna go from biking fifty or a hundred miles in the summer to five hundred, it's just gonna make it so that these need more and more maintenance. So anyway, so this, so I really think that's a future. So when I had been, and actually the project was brought to me a while ago by Dan for, with another project, a brewery, Netherwood Brewery, if you guys were there for that, if anybody was on the board, you might remember that. Um, and I thought that was interesting. And when Bike and Skate had to close during the pandemic, the owner of Bike and Skate and I got together and I just missed it because Scott, he maintained all of our bikes and he was just like, hey, I didn't know what was gonna happen with the pandemic. I didn't know what I should do. But now he is like, I'd love to get back into it, but I need more space. I'd like to get into this. And I was like, let's combine this. You know, we kinda know that we, I saw the numbers from them. I saw this. So the other time crunch that Dan isn't bringing up is that right now, we're in a position where these people are all kinda ready to go on this. So I was like, well, if it happens, that's great cause we can do it. But then if it gets delayed, 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 I don't know if we'll have, cause I don't have the tech, I don't have the, the knowledge. I can't run a brewery, nor can I run a bike shop. So, yeah.
We'll take that one step further.
Yeah.
Scott, when I start the conversation tonight about time is of the essence, we have a brewer, a very avid brewer that's ready to rock and roll. We have the local bike shop, Scott, who was in business in the village of Oregon, very intrigued to be part of this project. So we have the players on board. The reason I started out with the fifty-five thousand dollars of time is of the essence, the, the most efficient way to prepare this land is a surcharge. You basically build a mound of dirt. I'm gonna use gravel, so that's ultimately what we're gonna do, to squish all the wetness, all the junk out of it. And then you remove it and you put your building on. The theory is the size of that stone that's sitting on that pile is a, is a, the weight of the building plus. So when you remove it, you put the building, it's not gonna sink. So that's why it's really critical for us trying to get the surcharge on yet this year. If we don't get it on this year, then we have, the quickest way to achieve is basically pilings. So that really is a building built on stilts. And instead of fifty-five thousand dollars, it's now a hundred thousand dollars. It's double the cost. So the quickest, most efficient way to get this building built, this lot buildable is a surcharge. The other reason, um, I said time is of the essence is if you notice the outside, COVID has garage doors. Everything, everyone wants to be outdoors. Everyone wants to be opened up. Um, we wanna be open in the summer and I need four to five months to build this. If we put the surcharge on in April, May next year, not gonna happen. Now I'm two thousand twenty-three. Um, our goal is to get a surcharge on yet this year, hit it hard in the spring of two thousand twenty-two and be open next summer. So it's kinda like chicken, the egg, but, uh, we think we have an opportunity with all the players on board to take this. And I think it'd be a great, um, just a great asset for the community in general. It's, it's not a, it's not a tavern. It's not another food sto, another food store. It really is a great project that brings our goals, bring families to the community and do something fun and add tax base on a parcel that doesn't produce anything. And if we're looking at twenty, twenty thousand dollars a year on tax incremental finance and with the players on board, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. I, I know we have questions. Let me just say, I, I went out to the site, uh, just before noon. Uh, it certainly needs some redevelopment, the, the field. And, um, Dan, I think you alluded to the pond looks, looks pretty rough. The, the banks and the stuff, I saw a couple of volleyballs in, in the pond. It's a big pond, too.
Jeff and I actually have been talking about what we wanna do. They were waiting for some manpower options. We're just kind of going back and forth about the best way to take it, to try to clean it up. And actually, what ended up happening is this project came up, so we were like, wait, before we put any resources into it, let's figure out exactly what we're actually going to end up with versus spending some money to do this, clean it up and then go away, we don't need that anymore.
Yeah, so, so Jamie, just one question for you on the track. I mean, I, how are you thinking, where will the track sort of, it won't go around the pond?
No, it would end up on the north side of the pond.
Okay.
So it would be, uh, like from the back, from the north side of what would be the lot that you're looking at, it would wrap around and then go and then come towards Wolf Street and then loop at Wolf Street and then come back.
Okay. Okay. Alright, I know some, uh, other trustees have some questions. Amanda, do you wanna go?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I have some notes here, cause I, I have a lot of questions. Uh, and, and so I'm just looking mainly for clarification. I mean, I'm intrigued by the idea. Um, and I, I like aspects of it, so don't, don't let my questions scare you off. Uh, I just looking for clarification and maybe some modifications. We'll, we'll get there. Um, I'm just curious how this, is this gonna, this is gonna be one business entity, a bike and brew is, is one company or one LLC running it?
Uh, are you asking how we'll break up the different components of it or are you asking how inside the building it's going to feel?
Uh, I'm, I'm talking as a business entity, I guess, because what I'm, I have concern, it's sort of two different businesses and like
It will be, yeah, multiple
Nobody likes to talk about the worst case scenario, but I'm just saying if one side was successful and the other side wasn't, is one business gonna help shore up the other business or help? I, I'm trying to wrap my head around what this looks like as a business.
And we haven't actually even completely figured that out depending on how this goes and if that does happen, who would be investors and how that would all work. But, um, most likely it would be a group of three people being the owner of the bike shop, the owner, but then all of us would be together. Uh, it would, it would also affect whether or not I could even be involved in it if, there's a lot of questions about how that could work, but we need to know, I mean, before I sit down and hire attorneys, and if anybody's ever hired an attorney, you know that it's not cheap. So before I wanted to do that, I wanted to know whether or not there was even a, should we do this? And if we, if we do, then yeah. So I actually have had a couple of pre-meetings with them and so we have two different opportunities. One would actually be turning it into a brew hub and then if it was a brew hub, I'd actually have to change the licensing. I would actually make headquarters and deeks both actually the ancillary businesses that would be the off-site locations for the brew hub. That's one option. Um, or I don't have anything to do with it at all and the other guys take on one hundred percent of the, the business and they do it and I just become a landlord.
Gotcha.
I should also add, Amanda, um, the people that are part of this, um, while you're brewing beer and you're letting it boil, he's gonna work on a bike.
There's a lot of downtime at the brewery.
Yeah, there's gonna be, the people that are involved in this project, there's synergy on all three, from the drive-through to the bike to the brewing. So depending on how it's ran, I'm not sure about the legality of it, but the three partners on this are all helping each other, if that helps.
Okay, yeah, that does a little bit. So, you know, employees might be employees as a whole thing and, yeah, okay, alright. So some, not, not a hundred percent how it's gonna go yet. That's alright. Um, uh, you are sort of billing this as a family friendly place, um, and, uh, I like that idea. I'd love a bike shop in Oregon. Um, I guess the brewery part is what's throwing me because I feel like, you know, we've talked as a board about, you know, alcohol and, and being around kids a lot and stuff. And I, I guess personally, I would like to see some more separation between the bike shop and the brewery, more like a solid wall. I've been looking at the designs. I know it's all open and airy and you want that to kinda flow through, but part of me is going, if this is a brewery, I don't, the family friendly thing, it's, it's hanging me up. Like I don't see kids or parents bringing their kids to a bike shop to purchase a bike or have their bike tuned up. If there's gonna be people walking around with beer, just, if, I mean, I have, it's cognitive dissonance. I'm having a hard time with that.
Have you, I, I, do you like, uh, bend a pale eye to like, you know, any of the breweries over there or to Wisconsin Brewing?
I've been to, uh, Wisconsin Brewing, yeah.
Like out on the, you know, out on the grass, there's tons of families, dogs, people playing bags. I mean, that's kind of our, our vibe. Uh, same thing with like, if you go to Pale Eye, they have, you know, at, at, uh, the Hot Garden, they have outdoor music and they have, you know, again, people coming down on their kayaks and going through and they have people coming through on bikes and doing all the different things. And it's kinda, it, it, I mean, there's, there's, everybody has their own kind of vibe on it and I totally understand yours and I get it. And it's, 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 it's not meant to be like, hey, we're not expecting a kid to sit at like there with them. It's like, that's why there's a lot of outdoor stuff and why we say that our main function is to get people in the summer there. There's a, there's an entire design in our head of what we're gonna do in the winter cause then we don't expect there to be a lot of people there in the winter for that. It, it's more of like an outdoor kind of hangout kind of thing in the summer.
Okay. That clarifies it a little bit, I guess. Um, eh, then maybe that's just a matter of personal opinion then.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm open to the idea, so, um, let's see, uh, um, so do you have any sort of plans? I mean, I don't know if this is even a thing about, um, people biking and drinking. Is that, like, like as far as drinking too much and then getting on a bike and driving? I mean, is that?
It, it really, it, it's not like you're going on a snowmobile bar to bar. This is if you wanna come, talk to the bike mechanic, I wanna upgrade my tires, have a beer, talk to him and be done. It's really a small scale. People drive thirty miles for a good quality beer. If you look at the cost of beer these days, microbreweries, sixteen dollars for a quart pack. It's not a place that you're going and, and drinking twenty beers. It's like, hey, I'll get beer, I'll talk bike shop. I need to order a bike. I need to get my bike repaired. Um, sit outside. You know, some people do bike and have a beer and go to point A to point B, but most of people that are biking, it's, it's not like they're bar hopping. It's really, they go for the good beer and talk bikes.
Okay. Alright, well, that's, thank you for clarifying that. Um, let's see, you already talked about your licensing. You're not sure about how you're gonna do that yet. Um, uh, oh, bike track. So can you go a little more into detail about what a pump track is? Cause I don't know that terminology.
Uh, it's basically like a very smooth, um, humped version that kids on bikes can go over and you can use your own momentum to get speed. And then you have like berms that you ride up and down the side of and then you can add in different little features so you can zoom around on it. It's kinda like a skate park, but for bikes, but bigger. That's it.
Sure, sure. It's a big, big track.
Right, right.
Um, I think that's an interesting use of land. I know that, um, the, uh, stormwater issues, uh, you know, like that, that right now, the area is being used for stormwater detention, I guess. Um, there are uses, like recreational uses that are allowed on that and is, if that's allowed and it won't interfere with the stormwater function, I'm
Yeah, that's why, it'll be no, it'll all be semi-permeable. I mean, it'll be like, you, you just mold it, you know, kind of, and you, it's thin gravel and you just keep having to like weight it down and, you know, you pat it down till it kind of, and then that way it can still absorb water, but it isn't all concrete. It's not like a concrete thing. That just all, yeah, no.
Okay.
And we'll be working with, uh, the village on the design of all that and Dane County won't allow me to dump any sediment into that pond. So when there's a lot of design on that and what it looks like, we'll be working with the village on that.
Okay. Um, and I guess, uh, in the off time, is this something that would be open to, for people to use even if the bike shop and the brewery are closed or, um, I mean, are you treating it as a, as a private track for your customers or?
No, I would, I, no, I'm, anybody can go use it. I mean, I would make sure that it was, I mean, I probably have to talk to Matt and figure out exactly what, like how, is it, you know, would a sign that just says use at your own risk be sufficient, you know, like?
Yeah, and insurance. I don't know how you
Exactly.
Okay, but you're, you're thinking about these things and that's my
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how the, the, like, when we go to Quarry Ridge and I take my kids there and we go mountain biking, I mean, it's just a sign that says you're using Quarry Ridge at your own risk, you know? I mean, it's just a sign that says, you're using Quarry Ridge at your own risk, you know, and I mean, if you crash, I mean, I was just there with one of their friends, I broke his arm because he went off of a drop, and he didn't land it. But, you know, he doesn't then get to take, take legal action. It's just like, well, I took this chance because I'm here. I'm not sure exactly, but I'm assuming that that, with all of those places that currently exist, that there must be some, like, language that exists that says, hey, I'm doing this, and it's okay.
Okay.
And I don't plan to make it private or put gates or anything like that, no, I mean, it's anybody who wants to go there, I mean, yeah, like, use it. Be outside, do more activities.
Okay, and I'm assuming daytime use, you're not planning to light it up at night or anything like that?
No, no, no.
Okay, alright, cool. And then, uh, let's see, I think they had answered all that. And then, so, I guess the last piece of this, and I hate to do it because I don't want to, not looking to bring up the past, but I'm, I'm just curious about, like, an update maybe from the chief about how things are going at headquarters, because if it is a project that you decide you want to be involved in, you know, um, there've been some issues in the past at headquarters, and I just was wondering how that, how that's going? Just, I don't know if the chief has some sort of update on that.
Yeah, I could certainly give an update, but I would add that it might be nice to have Jamie give an update on his side. But from us, um, you know, and I, I said this at the last board meeting where we discussed this kind of coming to an end at the time, I will not hesitate to bring back to this village board, um, if we see issues there again. Um, so having said that, I haven't brought anything, so, um, if there's certainly that pattern, obviously, I'm not gonna come in with every little thing that may have happened, I just, first of all, I don't think that's fair to Jamie, um, but if there were a significant pattern like I brought forward before, that would absolutely be in front of you ASAP. So, that's the best way you can answer that question, but I don't know if Jamie, if you want to add anything?
Uh, no.
I, I'm, and I'm satisfied by that, I, I just wanted to, we wanted progress, and, and, and that's good. That's, that's all we can ask for, so, um, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, Jerry?
Yes, uh, thanks for bringing another great project to the village, gentlemen. This looks like a, not only unique, but really, I think it'll be very popular. My one question has already been answered about, I was concerned that the, your, your track would interfere with the functionality of the retention pond, but it looks like you got that all covered. So, my question is just gonna be about the TIF assistance itself. I know you said pay-go, pays-go, which, you know, is the, uh, best way to go for the residents of the village, because it does not affect their, their property taxes at all. So, I mean, you mentioned tool, are they both gonna function the same?
I was hoping we could, and that's probably, that's a great question. I was, the one thing, if I put surcharge on this year right now, Jamie's gotta open up his wallet, dump $55,000 on this property.
Right, right.
And let her rip. He doesn't have it. And I'm not saying the village does either. However, I also know that the pays-go on the remaining part would be amazing.
Okay.
The upfront, the pays-go, Jerry, I'd be looking more of a, an economic loan through the TID as normal, as a normal process. The upfront just gets the, just gets the project rolling, and it turns a parcel of land into a buildable parcel of land someday.
Alright, and what would the, what would the payback be on that initial part?
Oh, jeez, I would think, once this building's built, your tax value would be very close to headquarters, which is $22,000 a year, so, less than four years.
Okay.
Yeah, less than four years.
Alright, cool, thank you, I, I support this project.
Now, the one thing I should comment on, I, I showed this as a marketing, uh, brochure to a couple developers, and both developers asked me if this has been built yet. I said, no, they said, well, I wanna build one in Middleton. And I'm like, no, you can't do that, because I wanna be the first. So, just so you know, it's a lot of people I talk to really like the energy with this.
Okay, good project, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the board? So I think Martin and Matt, where we're headed is, we kind of want to get a sense from the board if we are, wanna go to the next level, which is take it to Ellers, is, am I right?
I, I presume so, let me just ask, because I, I'm sorry I was a few minutes late, guys. So, Dan, you described like a two-part TIF proposal?
If, if possible, man.
Okay, so you're looking for about 50, 55,000 upfront for the surcharging?
Correct.
That would be village funding upfront on the front end, and then what's the second piece?
Uh, basically, the second piece is our gap between our economic loan, economic assistance, to overcome, one of the things that's happened in the last year, and it's, it's a dirty word, and it's, um, appraisals. I will estimate a building back in March, they go to the bank, they, bank says, yep, let's go get an appraisal on commercial properties, and that appraisal is way upside down. The commercial construction is not keeping up with the prices that we're seeing in the market right now. Unlike residential, you can do an appraisal pretty easy on residential, there's 20 homes that sold in subdivision, boom, that's what it's worth. COVID, we've seen owners of buildings freak out and sell properties at extreme loss, and now you have rising cost, um, everything across the board. My garage doors are up 300%, um, drywall, steel is up 42%, all since October. And we ran the performers on this, if you sold two pints a day, times 50 people, it produces X amount of money. If you sell X amount of bikes, it produces this. This project was feasible, but with current date of where we're at, just some material costs, I'm upside down $150,000, that's how we came up with that number.
Okay, so you're projecting, uh, the second piece of 150,000?
150 total.
Oh, so 100 for the second?
50,000 for the surcharge upfront, and 100 grand for, uh, or.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine for the second piece?
Yes.
Okay, and so, um, so that, I'm not sure what the next, you know, I'm seeing two possible scenarios in terms of the next steps. One would be, send the whole proposal to Ellers, uh, to evaluate essentially the gap piece, because I'm not sure that Ellers would really have a significant role in analyzing that $50,000 upfront surcharging piece. Maybe they would, I'm not sure. So, uh, we, we could, uh, we could send the whole thing to Ellers, and then they would report back and provide their, um, analysis to the board about whether they, whether they agree that that gap is there, and, and would need to be filled in order for this project to, to work. Okay, so that would be, uh, one way to go. The other way to go, and I'm not sure what you're proposing here, would be to say, well, let's just go ahead and agree to the 50, and get that done, and then have Ellers evaluate the gap. I'm not sure from a scheduling standpoint, if you're asking for the, for the village to approve the 50 quickly, and then to follow up with the gap analysis later. I, I don't know how long it'll take Ellers to do its analysis, and my experience, you know, it kind of depends. I mean, a month would be fast, two months would be like, more like normal, in terms of what I, what I'm used to seeing. When do you need to have the, the surcharging in place to, to be ready to go?
We'd love to get surcharge on in November, two months.
Okay, so, you know, maybe if we got started right away, Ellers could get through and analyze everything, and, but still, then, then we get back, then, then we're back from Ellers, and now we're talking about negotiating the details of an agreement, and getting that drafted, and putting all the, the details together, and that's usually another, you know, easily a month. So now we're talking from now, if we put, if we go through the typical process, I would guess, best-case scenario would be about 90 days. Let me ask you guys this, on the, on the 50 upfront, I mean, what assurance could you offer the village, if the village made 50,000 available to surcharge without any, you know, when you still have a lot of questions about how you're gonna make all of this work, and we still haven't even answered the, the but-for test on the next piece of this, what assurance could you offer the village that it's going to recover that $50,000, when we don't know if this is gonna happen?
Well, I think the but-for on the 50-some thousand dollars is pretty black and white, correct?
Well, but I guess what I'm asking is, what if we put in the 50, and then you guys, we don't, we don't get there on the rest of the project, and it doesn't happen?
Well, but if that, at, at some point, somebody's going to have to, and if I, if I don't do this, if I sell it to somebody, I sell it to you and you put up a law firm, and we're gonna need to, they're gonna need to do this anyway, so it's, it's almost a function of making this thing buildable at some point, I mean, the most economic way to make this happen. I mean, we did it at headquarters, we put it on. So, I mean, I would be willing to say, like, if this doesn't go through, we could work out something where, because it actually would then add value to me being able to sell it, it just means then I would sell it, and I could actually recoup that cost versus having to pay somebody else, or having somebody buy it at a discount. So I, instead of being able to sell it to you for 75,000, I could sell it to you for 125,000.
Right, so I guess, my question is, would you, would we be taking our chances on that, and just saying, here's 50K?
No, I'm saying, I could, I would work out something that if this didn't happen, then I would, I would, because then I would probably sell it to somebody else, or try to sell it, or put it on the market, or do something with it at some point, and then, at that point, that 50,000 would actually be purely what they would have had to do anyway, I mean, anybody's gonna have to do it.
So here's two different paths forward, one potentially, one is two separate agreements, one on the 50, the other on the rest. The 50 could be faster, the rest would be slower, or no, let's just do it all as one, but there's no certainty that we're ready by.
No, that makes sense, Matt.
Or no certainty we're ready by November, if we.
But then we have plenty of time on the second piece, because we're not, I mean, the surcharge has to sit for four or five months, so we could figure out that second piece if we did the first piece that way.
Okay, so, those were my questions, and I don't know if the, so I'm still not exactly sure what the assurance would be, but.
I'm, I'm still unclear on, I, I wanna go back to the 50.
Yeah.
We give them the 50, Ellers doesn't, it doesn't pan out, how do we get our 50 back?
Well, we, we don't have the details on that, what I heard from Jamie is, he's willing to negotiate an agreement of some kind that would provide some kind of assurance to the village, that it would recover its 50, but I don't know exactly what the details are.
Yeah, it wasn't clear.
I think it, I think there's an agreement that can be worked around and put on the table, so the village has confidence on it. I just recently did one in Pittsburgh, I had to produce all the invoices and actual data that I estimated $647,000 into this land, here's the invoices, here's the backup for the TIF. And it was an agreement I do with the city of Pittsburgh. I think Ellers, if Ellers saw this, and they approached Ellers, I think they'd come up with a way to make sure, I'm not worried about the but-fours, and will it pan out, and add tax base, in fact, I ran the scenarios. It's, you double the cost in tax increment within, by the time this TID closes. I think there's an agreement that can be worked out, Matt, and I think Mr. Bush would have to decide, if we're still waiting, does he go to the, does he go to the bank and run the risk and put the surcharge on? Which I don't wanna do.
Maybe we can clear stuff, Matt, if, if this is something that would actually happen, and you are willing to write something out, I will say that by such-and-such date, if you do not have a building on there, I will repay the loan. That's what you're asking for?
Um, something like that.
Yeah, because then I'd sell the property to somebody else, so yes, I am willing to do that, because if I sell it, then they would, I mean, I would basically either have to sell it to somebody at that minus 50, or I would say, hey, it's ready to be built on, so either way, I'm either gonna have to sell it at a discount, or they would have to come to you and ask for the same exact thing.
And we just, so that, what I'm hearing is, you're prepared to guarantee that.
Yes.
The village, either there's gonna be a project that's gonna generate the revenue necessary to pay that 50 back, or you're just gonna pay the 50 back?
Well, I would just sell the lot as, and then that way, that part of the sale of the lot could then recover the village's money, yes. We could figure out something.
So that's what I'm hearing.
Alright, so are there two things, Matt, here, do, do, do you need the 55, do, do you need that right away?
I don't need it until he says I need to dump.
Alright, so Matt, do we send, just basically what we need to do is send everything to Ellers?
No, what I'm hearing is, that this is really two separate deals.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a deal for about 50,000 for the surcharging, that they're proposing that the village authorize us to work out an agreement, that we'd come back to you quickly, that would authorize upfront funding, the village is gonna have to come up with $50,000 from somewhere, we'll have to ask Lisa where she'd get the money. The village would have to come up with $50,000 within the next several months to fund the surcharging to begin this fall, with some kind of guarantee from the developer here that, um, the village is gonna be repaid. That's part one of what I'm hearing.
And then send the rest to Ellers?
Part two is to turn the rest over to Ellers for an analysis of their proposal for gap financing for the rest of the project, for an analysis of whether, you know, Ellers agrees that it is economically justifiable, given the economics of the deal. And then, there's less urgency associated with that, is what I'm hearing, because you wouldn't, you'd wanna get started in the spring, so you'd wanna have that deal done by maybe January or February kind of thing?
That'd be great.
That'd be awesome.
Um, that's what I'm hearing from these guys, so the first issue, so there's only two issues for the board. Do you wanna authorize staff to start working on that first agreement for the 50,000? And I'd ask Lisa where she's gonna get the money.
Mm-hmm, I would too.
Let's start, let's start with that.
Yeah.
How would you finance that, Lisa? Any idea?
I know that we have some funds, some borrowed, money that we've borrowed already that we haven't spent, but I don't know if it can be repurposed and used for this project, I'd have to look into that. So, I'm, I'm not.
So we have a little uncertainty about the source of funding, so you'd really have to direct staff to first figure out, is there a way available to generate the funds? Is there a path that works to generate the, the revenue necessary to fund the product, the 50,000? We don't have an answer to that, Matt. And then if there is, do you want us to start working on an agreement of this sort that's been described, and bring it back to you, probably about a month from now, to, you know, see if it works from the board's perspective? Uh, that's one question, and then the second question after that, assuming the answer to that is yes, let's do those things. Then the next question would be, do you wanna authorize us to have Ellers analyze their gap funding?
Okay, how are people feeling? So, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Question on, uh, the surcharging, now, if I understand surcharging, you just put a big load of rocks on that, let it sit? Is that correct?
To a certain degree, you, yes, what's, it's most efficient, peel off all the bad dirt, topsoil that's sitting on it right now, and underneath that dirt, look, soil borings is a very, it's a very, it's a bunch of clay, so it's full of water. So, you can see there's added parking lot on there, so, and we need base floor inside the building, so all the stone for the parking lot, as well as the building, plus a factor you put on the actual building footprint, and you put settling plates in, so every week, we watch it settle, watch it settle, and it's a big draft, and all of a sudden it just drops, it stops. So, when we did headquarters, it took about three and a half months, about, right?
And we've still settled since, but it's the best that you can do.
Marginal.
Yeah.
So it's a course of time, it's, it's the most efficient way of doing it, and you peel the stone off, that's your parking lot base, and you construct the building, and the theory is, the weight of the stone is the same weight as the building once it's, you, once it's installed.
So, if you did the surcharging and then decided not to go forward with the project, you can't pull the stone?
Uh, best thing for it, honestly, to sit it, what we would do is mulch it and put grass on it. We're, we're gonna seed it no matter what throughout the winter for erosion, and it would, would use stone, and then we'd use another topsoil on top of that, and we'd seed it and mulch it, because winter's coming, we don't want it all anywhere. So we would pull that off, and then we have it, so no matter what, the longer it sits, the better off it is.
Okay, so it's not like we're gonna, if this doesn't go forward, we're looking at a big pile of rocks on the east side of headquarters?
No, it would, I don't remember, well, if you drove by it when it was headquarters and they had that, it, it would be a mound of dirt, and then if the person that would want to buy it, if this doesn't happen, and I tried to sell it, as long as they're building, and we kind of know exactly where the building is gonna have to fit, based on what, you know, planning commission said, you can't actually, you know, like setbacks and everything else. Depending on the scope of their building, they pretty much have to build it where we're building it, to have a parking lot and to have access, and so that would mean that that is where they would want that, because I was told it was like a sponge, and so essentially you're squishing the sponge down, and you're waiting, and the longer it sits there, it just means the sponge can't reabsorb any water, and then when it finally does get used, whenever that date happens, you push it off, you build it quick, and the sponge doesn't get to bounce back, it just stays low.
Correct.
Yeah, pretty good. Do you have a business plan for this yet, or you're not at that stage?
Uh, we have a couple, uh, but none of them with all of them together, because it started as a brewery, and then I actually really wanted the bike shop to come into town, and then I kind of melded the bike shop, and then I just kind of thought having the drive-through coffee would be handy in the morning, and then I talked to the lawyers, and they said that I had to have food if I wanted to be a brew pub, so then I had to adjust the kitchen. So I have three, but, uh, they have to be kind of mounted together in a way that actually works. Now, I would actually prefer to not actually be as involved, um, I'm getting old, and I've done this for a long, long time, and so doing the next thing in my life, not sure what that's gonna be, but I also think it would be pretty cool, and I kind of like doing things, so I end up getting myself into more trouble with my wife, and, you know, this is the next one. So, yeah, I have lots, I can show you what you want to see, I don't know exactly what you're looking at, though, or what you wanna see.
I just want to be sure that five years down the road, we have a reasonable chance here in business.
Oh, I don't, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure how that works for, um, I guess I, 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 I can make the numbers say anything, I, in my heart, I believe it will work, but I mean, like, I had to do this, I've had to do this for 504 financing, for government financing, I've, I've written a bunch of business plans, a lot of them, I couldn't make it tell you that it's gonna work, you know what I mean? Like, I could just go through it, and I could say, this is how many beers I'm gonna save, because this is how, I, I know that I'm gonna make this much profit on this, I know my bike shop is gonna make this per square foot, I know that this is what my restaurant's gonna make, based on my, you know, expected sales, and I go through all of those, go through all of those different assets, and then go, okay, this is what we're gonna do, but that manipulation, I, I, I would rather just tell you in my, I wouldn't put in my effort, my time, and my money if I didn't think it was gonna be successful.
Now, I'm gonna add one more thing to that, Mike, if it fails, because that's what I'm hearing, if it fails, the village still has a 5,800 square foot building on the tax, on the tax base, and whether or not it turns into a accounting office, whether or not it turns into, um, a dentist, we now have a. a dentist, we now have a million dollar plus building on a lot that is currently vacant that you can't build on. So even if it does fail, not that I, not that Jamie ever touches anything that ever fails, cause nothing does. Moral of the story is, it can turn into anything if it did fail.
Mike, anything else?
Not at the moment.
Okay, so, so I think we, we need to figure out this, um, first of, the upfront cash. We, we don't know we have, we don't know that we have the fifty-five thousand dollars. So I, I'm a little uncomfortable voting on that until we figure out, do we have it? Yeah. But how are people feeling about, about that? And then, the other piece is, is pushing next step to Ellers to look and see if everything works. Let's take the fifty-five. How are you folks feeling about that? Luke?
I, I have reservations on it. Just, we're asking taxpayers to spend fifty-five thousand without a review that we don't know we have. And I, to be honest, I'm, this is, no offense to you guys, I'm just really struggling with understanding. Can you help me in really simple terms, just understand why you need the fifty-five upfront? Is it for the gravel and the seed and all that you were just describing?
It's the cost of the surcharge, cause Jamie, basically, by the time this is in business, and you construct it, I mean, Jamie would have to get an appraisal done on the building right now. By the time that happens, get financing put in place, get, get that money to put the surcharge on, wait until January, February, March, April, before it even starts construction. It's a matter of getting the money, paying interest on it, and then starting the project. By, by all means, Luke, you could take the fifty-five as well as the other and use it as one worst-case scenario. That's an option, but we just thought about fast-tracking. We had the players on board. If it was available, we'd love to get rolling on it.
If, if I heard Matt's assumption correctly, if we did ask Ellers to review the entire plan, we're probably looking at three months, so that puts us into December. But you still got, you know, a few months before spring. Does that give you a, a doable timeline? If we were to push this to December, lumping it all to get, all together, just to make sure that we can tell our taxpayers?
If I knew mother nature doesn't come early and put frost in the ground, absolutely. Um, time is of the essence. I mean...
So, so Dan, if I hear you right, if, if we did combine them, you, you guys could live with that?
It, it's an option, Randy.
Okay.
I mean, it's, at, end of the day, I think, using round numbers, the one fifty has to fit on the overall pro forma, or it doesn't.
Yeah.
And I think Ellers is gonna demonstrate whether or not it's fifty-five or a hundred and fifty, does it pay back? And can you get a twenty-two thousand dollar tax base on it per year?
Okay. All right, others? Yeah, Amanda, and then Derek?
Yeah, just real quick, if for some reason the funding didn't come before the ground freezes on you, do you think this project will hold another year? Like, your people involved, are they gonna stay with it? Or is that gonna cause problems for the project?
Hey, it probably won't happen. I mean, if, if we don't get it going, cause the two people that I need to have to do this are the bike shop guy and the brewery guy. And they're not aboard at the moment, but you, I mean, in a year and a half, are you willing to commit this? You know what I mean? It's like, I can't, I can't justify that, or I can't verify that they'll be like, yep, I'm still in. Maybe. It's kinda why this kinda happened so quickly. Honestly, in our world, this happened in a very short amount of time, cause we kind of were approached by Scott, the, the old bike shop guy was like, I, I, I really wish I was still here. I, I could've made a, this would've been a great time to be a bike shop owner, honestly. They sold a lot of bikes everywhere. And I, he really saw that this was an opportunity, and then the person that we have that's looking at being the brewer was also looking to change careers due to COVID. So they were looking at doing this. I would probably put the chances that it, it, it drops dramatically if we wait a full year.
The only thing I was gonna say is, I would think Ellers, Matt, probably could do an overall view on the fifty and one fifty pretty quick, within nine, I mean, maybe not ninety days, but in the next thirty to sixty.
Yeah, so the, the ninety days, it is a combination of Ellers' time
Yep.
plus the legal time, putting the agreement together, and the time working with the board and you on getting that all finalized to get to the point, or to get to the point where we actually sign agreements? I'm thinking, in my experience, ninety days would be about the fastest I've seen something like that go. Could it go faster? Maybe. I'd just be skeptical that we could go much faster than that. It could take longer, that's the thing. We just, it, you just never know exactly how long these things are gonna take.
No, I, I hear you. I, I think where I was getting at is if, if Ellers came back in November and said, hey, this one fifty works all day long. I understand, we got four more months to do the legal stuff and everything else. I think if we had some direction at that point where Ellers is sitting, I think the village board would feel comfortable. And I think Jerry would, or Jamie would feel comfortable, knowing it was coming, to pull the trigger and get rolling. Am I wrong?
Jerry thinks it's fine.
All right. So, so we could, we could wait and do it all together, if?
It's, it's about, I mean, I just was, when I brought this to Dan, we did the math, and this is what he came up with, and he said, this is how it works in his experience. And some, and he's obviously done a lot more buildings than I have, and a lot more things. But every individual deal and every individual community is gonna have their own thresholds, and we just talked about that. It's, you know, it's your cup of tea or mine. So I just wanna see it kinda happen. So if this is the easiest way for everybody here to feel the most confident that they're getting what they're getting, yeah, I'm willing to do that.
All right, so let me ask the rest of trustees, what's, what, what's your opt, what's, what are you favoring? Should we try to see if we can find the fifth, or should we do it all and hope that Ellers can get it all done at once? That's kinda the question.
It sounds like, we don't need to necessarily have the legal agreements, but if Ellers can produce something that says this is a feasible option, that, that is okay. So because they said that, and, and my thoughts are, I would like to do the joint combination and have Ellers review.
The whole thing, okay. Uh, Derek?
Yeah, I'll hold on.
Hold on, I'm gonna...
Okay. What, Mike, what, Amanda, what do you think? Together?
Well, yeah, I guess, I would say...
Cause we don't know where the money is. I mean, Lisa would have to find out.
I would say together is probably where I'm at, uh, and I hope that they can get it done in time. That would be...
So I'm, not to interrupt, but I'm looking at, um, I've got all the numbers plugged in for the projected for twenty-twenty-one, and, um, and the general fund right now is projected to have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus. And of that, we have a contingency in there for sixty-four thousand dollars. That is not earmarked for anything right now, so just to let you know that there is some funds probably available.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's, that's just the first part of it, though, right?
Right. Yeah, that's if you did it, the two separate ones, they could get the fifty-five thousand, and then they could do the second one, have Ellers go through the whole Bufford test for the other eighty-nine thousand.
Derek, and then Amanda?
I'd, I'd be leaning more toward just finding out whether or not the fifty-five thousand is even feasible first. Just, I'm sure your, your, your business will be wildly successful if it comes to fruition, but I, I gotta say, I do have concerns, uh, just from a public safety aspect, whenever you mix moving vehicles, kids, and bicycles going forward, so there's that, that, I think the chief addressed that earlier, but when she brought up just the last meeting at the increase of calls, not from headquarters, but just in general. I do have my concerns on that end, once this is built, but I, I think there's no harm in looking into the first part of this financing, just to see how it goes. And going from there.
Amanda?
Yeah, I forgot what I was gonna say before, but, um, you know, I, I have said, you know, I have, have some concerns with the, the bike shop and the brewery being so closely knit together, more inside the building is what I'm thinking, like, I just really feel like I'd rather see a wall of separation, kind of making it, like, this is the brewery, this is where people eat, this is, this half, and this half of the building is bike stuff, and people can walk through a doorway or something, but not a clear division. I, I just, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around. Well, go ahead.
There's a, a place called MP One in Verona, Wisconsin, and it's right across from Fireman's Park. And they have a coffee house within it. They have garage doors, they have a patio, they have beer on tap, they have beer sale. And it's a bike shop, a bike fitting, rolling, and they also have, people have meetings there all day long in the morning. Huge, hugely successful, and there's kids in there, and the families in there all the time. It's, it's, it's a new way, I think, and I totally understand where you're coming. But people aren't just going to bars and hanging out and getting drunk. I mean, that's not majority of who we're looking for right now. We're looking for people that wanna get out and do family stuff. I, for one, I love looking at a bike, and if I can have a beer, and yeah, this is great, let's talk smart, let's talk about the price. It, it's a different feeling.
So I guess maybe I'm not explaining it properly. I've, I've seen a trend in this, in village of combining everything with alcohol. There's alcohol at the skate, skating rink. There's alcohol, uh, you know, it seems like we, there's this culture in Wisconsin and in the village of, if it's family-friendly, we have to have alcohol. Are we gonna sell alcohol at the concession, at the concession stand at J C Park? I mean, do, can adults, honestly, I, I mean, can adults in this town get through their kids' sporting events without having a beer? It's very frustrating to me as a parent. I feel like every fun thing there is to do for kids in this town, there's alcohol available. Why is that? I just, I, that's my, where I'm coming from. It's not...
The entire time my kids were going up there, I was the coach of every one of their teams, so I wasn't drinking. So I did it that way. I don't know, everybody's gonna do their own thing. I, I guess I'm just trying to find something that I think is going to actually drive. I, I think it works with what we're doing next door in terms of, like, I, I like, I like being outside. I like having, you know, that aspect of it. I also want to have, I totally see what you're, Mike, I do see what you're saying. It is, it, we are, well, we're a culture driven by way too many made phones and technologies and drinking and all sorts of things. If it was just about that, well, I mean, I have a place right next door that can do that. The reason why I was doing that is cause I, I, I do think that brewery is actually one of the few things that actually does bring people to our community. Cause nobody leaves the community for a bar. Like, I mean, they're not gonna drive by their own places in their own community, and they're not gonna drive by those, like, whether they're in Verona, they're not gonna drive by the drafthouse to come to headquarters. They, nobody, nobody will. Nobody drives to their community for a local place. I mean, my cheeseburger is great. It's not much better than their cheeseburger, honestly. You know what I mean? It's like, we do the best that we do. They will for this. And I guess I'm looking at things that get people to come to our community in a positive way. And that is, hey, I'll come here, I'll use your bike shop, I'll, I'll, I'll rent your e-bikes. I mean, we're looking at doing GPS-like trackers that we can rent and then actually put people on, like, hey, you wanna go to the zoo? It's twenty-three miles, this is how you get there. It takes you every step of the way. You can bring your kids, and whether or not, you know, cause now they don't have to pedal, cause how many little, like, ten-year-olds, but they could, they could do it with these. And so we're looking at other options to try to do this, but this actually does bring people to Oregon, and that's what I'm looking at.
We're also seeing all the bike paths in the, in the future, in the next five years. Look at all the connection between Oregon, Stoughton, Stoughton, McFarland. With the creation of e-bikes, um, it's, it's a friendly area. You can come, you can go bike for the day with your family and come back. You wanna go at HQ, you can go to HQ. You wanna a beer that you can't get anywhere, you can't go to Bill's and buy it, you can't go to HQ and buy it. Have a beer when you're done, great. It's really that synergy. It's not really a tavern. There's all it is, if that helps.
I, I mean, I love the biking aspect. I think it's gonna be wildly successful, but you know, that, it's, it's hard to find the family-friendly activities.
It's very, very difficult to run a bike shop in the winter, so the problem that you have is that you have to subsidize it in some way. So it, it's great to have, like, an ideology where you're like, hey, I'm gonna do this, and this is great, and it will be, cause I, I agree with you. I think all summer long, there'll be no problems. The moment November hits, that's what Scott ran into. Like, where his, where, where his monetary, it just goes away. And so you have to try to figure out, so it, it's, I mean, it's, you try to figure out a way to make it work, so that's where you try to make it work.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, I've said my piece, I...
So, so where, where are we, trustees? Are, are we, are we not even sure we're in favor of this?
I would say I'd be interested. I'm just, I'm offensive. I don't know. Go ahead.
Derek?
I would say I'd be interested to see what Lisa comes back with for the financing end of it before we
Okay.
have a, if, if it's even feasible, before we have a broader discussion.
Cause, cause we're not voting on, on the TIF stuff tonight, that we're gonna wait for Ellers. But we still have the issue about the, the fifty-five thousand. Is that an option to give that to them now that Lisa has found? Or do you want it all together? We need to decide that. You wanna give it all to Ellers? Yeah, Luke?
I'm absolutely in favor of the business. I think it's a great idea. I still stand with trying to combine it all together with Ellers.
Okay, so combining through you, okay.
Yeah.
Mike, go ahead.
I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm not a big fan of tax incremental districts, and probably would vote against this had, uh, when they put together to the fore, but, but now that it's in place, I'm more inclined to help them with the surcharging than I am with the rest of it, just because the land is so poor quality. And, you know, you can get good land and put a building on it, as opposed to putting it on a swamp, so I'm, I'm more leaning towards that if we have the money, um, to do it, and we can have guarantees that we get that money back.
Okay. Amanda?
That makes, I guess, the most sense to me, too. Uh, I was kinda saying combine them earlier, but I guess, you know, it's, it's gonna get developed at some point. Our village is growing. That's just a fact. We're gonna have to do this probably at some point for whatever the project, so if we split it up, that part at least can get going on it maybe quicker, and then, and then the rest of it, let's talk. I mean, I, I'm not necessarily categorically against this. I mean, I wish the project was different, but if people in this community will go there, I mean, I can't really say, just cause it's not really my thing. You know, I, I, I guess, I think it is a money maker, honestly. I think it will get business, so I would say, um, let's...
All right, Matt, should we, should we vote on the fifty-five?
It sounds like, yeah, maybe let's get a decision on, do you wanna authorize us to proceed with the surcharge dollars, and get an agreement ready on that right away.
All right, so we're looking for a motion, okay?
Yeah, make motion, um, contingent on the contract that Matt drafts
Okay.
for that.
To, to allow them?
To allow, to proceed with the fifty-five thousand.
Second? Okay, Amanda? Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
Nay.
Okay. And then the, the second piece, um, Matt, we don't need, do we need to, you wanna vote on passing to Ellers?
Yeah, I think the second piece is, Luke, does the board wanna authorize us to work with the Ellers and the developer to analyze the, um, this second piece of TIF funding requested? And I don't know if there's been any discussion of who would pay for that analysis. Is that something you guys are looking to have the village pay for, or would you be willing to cover that expense?
My past experience, Matt, is I typically would write down a down payment to Ellers for up to ten thousand dollars. And they charge you accordingly. And I wanna say in Pittsburgh, they charged me forty-six hundred dollars, and I got refunded the balance.
So you guys are...
So it's typically what I've seen done through that in the past, and we would be willing to do that.
You guys are willing to cover that Ellers expense?
Yep.
Okay, so I think the question is for the board is, uh, with the developer prepared to pay Ellers costs associated with analyzing the second piece of TIF funding, do you wanna authorize us to proceed with that? And we'd have the developer sign a reimbursement agreement and get a deposit to cover that expense.
Correct.
All right. Yeah, Luke?
Sorry, I was just gonna make a motion.
Go ahead, absolutely, go ahead. Oh, that's what Matt said?
Yep.
Okay. That's easy, eh? Is there a second? All right, Derek? Okay, any other discussion? So, just, you know, we'll still have a, a kick at this, cause we're not approving the TIF or anything until we see what the analysis is, so. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
We'll see you when it comes back.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah. All right. Are we all okay, or do we need to keep going? Or do we need a break?
What time is it?
It's, uh, less than six. Not too long.
It feels like it's been real.
Let's go a little, let's go a little longer here, see, yeah.
A little bit.
Let's go to five, which is a proclamations and announcements. Five A is upcoming meetings and events. We have that in the packet. Get that stuff in your your calendar. Six is report of village officers. Uh, Martin has got a nice detailed, uh, report of everything he's been involved in, all the upcoming projects and things. Anybody have any questions for for Martin on that? Pretty pretty comprehensive there. Yeah, Derek.
Yeah, I just got one quick one. Uh, it says on here that Candy, Chief Pagan cop and yourself met with representatives of Nehemiah. I'm not sure this if this is a question for an hour later, but Chief Pagan cop, is that the same meeting that you're referencing later in the agenda? In your report? As you have it listed as, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion group.
Nope, that would not be the same meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, six, six A is, uh, Chief Pagan cop. You want to say something about your report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, first, before I dive into my report here, I just, uh, wanted to make a quick comment about the first responder event and the nine eleven event. Um, they both were amazing events to attend. Uh, it was nice to see our community come together for both, especially just in these weird times we're in right now. Um, and I personally went to both and my my family did, too, and we all enjoyed it. So, uh, thank you to, um, the organizers of the first responder event and the nine eleven event. Both did an excellent job. And just, uh, thank you so much to O C A Media for recording it, uh, because I know a lot of people couldn't make it. With the pandemic, uh, they just felt more comfortable not attending, and this way they can still enjoy it, um, by viewing, uh, the footage that was captured. So, uh, the monthly report, uh, before I dive into it, I just want to throw out there. Um, this report took me quite a bit of time to put together. I would say, uh, if I were to add in all of the days, roughly two weeks. Um, this is obviously, uh, the formatting had to be created, but even the the information, the content that's in it took me a long time. And the reason I say that is if we get something fairly serious in this village that occurs, my attention's gonna be on that. Uh, it's a top priority. For example, and knock on wood, hopefully it does not happen, but if we have a homicide or a major emergency, I'm also the emergency management director, those things are gonna pull me away from these, and you may not get it for that month. It's just unfortunate, unfortunately, the way it's gonna happen. Um, so to start out the report, um, this is for the month of July. I'm already working on August. So when the Oregon Observer makes their monthly request of me for, uh, incidents that's happened for the month, I run that report. And what it does is it typically produces between a two-hundred-and-sixty-two, three-hundred-page report, um, and it gives details of each and every call our officers respond to. And that's where I get that number that I've reported to you guys in the past, uh, where we're seeing that uptick in calls for service. Um, what I do with that report that I run is I actually read through it word for word, because I I, as the chief, want to know what's happening. But I also take that as an opportunity to redact any information per, uh, Wisconsin law for open records, and then I ultimately release that report to the Or- Observer. So while I'm doing that, I then, um, decide what notable incidents I'd like to let you guys know about. Uh, not only is this posted in, uh, the agenda, but we also release it on our Facebook and it's on our website. Um, I try to find incidents that I think are are worthy of letting you know about. Um, I will not report domestic abuse situations, because I do not want to ever, uh, prevent a victim from reporting incidents. So I I'm leaving those out unless it's a very unique circumstance where I think it it would be okay. Um, OWIs, you'll see a lot of those are in here. That takes up a lot of our time, and it typically takes two officers to handle those incidents. Um, and as I type this up, um, a- a- as you can see, a lot of these OWIs, it's not just alcohol we're dealing with. It is, um, drugs as well, and in in one case, it was a handgun that was refurbished to be a airsoft gun. Um, I'm not gonna go through each and every incident with you, but there is a trend. Um, so several of these incidents are have have happened at QuickTrip on the cell side. Um, and I I want to point out that, because I could see some thinking, wow, you know, is is QuickTrip becoming a problematic area? When in fact, uh, QuickTrip, all of all of our QuickTrips have been excellent partners in reporting anything concerning. Um, I would say they are an excellent public safety partner for us. They see anything, they report it right away. And QuickTrip South, um, tends to be the easiest place for people to stop in. Number one, it's open, uh, all night. But then, secondly, it's just your easiest QuickTrip to hit if you're driving on Highway fourteen. So, uh, it's not a surprise to me to see QuickTrip South listed more, um, than any others. So we move on to the, um, types of calls for service. So this isn't actually an accurate depiction of the calls for service categorized by the type, because there are two-hundred-and-thirty types of calls our officers respond to. So I had to pull all of the data, which took a long time, but then regroup it into, um, sections, because otherwise you'd be looking at pages of data, and I just I don't think you guys want to do that. But A- Amanda had asked, uh, excellent question when I brought forward, uh, that that diagram that showed that uptick in calls for service. You, Amanda, you had asked, uh, what exactly are you seeing that uptick in? So as you can see, um, and I've highlighted just the ones that stuck out to me, your accidents with no injury, uh, follow-up went from four to twenty-four over one year. That, um, to me, tells me as a chief who's been doing this for a long time, that our officers more now than ever are doing more thorough investigations. They're they're working to the nth degree to find good resolution for our victims. Foot patrol, uh, so we went from seventy, uh, from thirty to seventy-four. Uh, our officers are out there, uh, you know, all of our communities in Dane County are getting significantly higher rates of these theft from autos and these burglaries. And it's really scary, because these people are at home sleeping in their beds and they're hearing this happen. So our officers are out there, um, uh, looking for open garage doors, uh, looking for suspicious activity. So you're that's why you're seeing that, uh, significant uptick in foot patrol. We're staying ahead of it. Uh, the same with the check area suspicious activity. They're they're gonna document whenever they see something that doesn't look right, because even if we don't catch a person that night, if day shift then gets, um, a rash of theft of autos, they're gonna have that extra information that those night shift officers documented as suspicious. Um, and I also just the the traffic alone, it's up. Um, and so in looking at twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one in July, there's been a twenty-one percent increase in calls for service. Um, just the, you did this, this next page is what you've typically seen, uh, the meetings that I attend. Uh, obviously, you're not gonna see as long of a list for staff, other staff, because they're handling all of the calls. And if there's an uptick in calls, that's what they're doing. Um, last page, just additional notes to get make you all aware of. Uh, we do have homecoming parade coming up October eighth, and we are always happy to help out with that. Uh, and then we had our annual K nine golf outing at Legend of Bergamot this year. And and we'd like to thank the local businesses, community organizations, residents and others who supported the event. Even some of our our department heads, uh, came to the event and volunteered and helped out. Uh, we really appreciate that, and it was actually one of the best turnouts we've had thus far. I'm happy to take any questions about the report.
Yeah, Derek. I just got, uh, well, a couple of things, um, that going back to the diversity equity and inclusion, was that Alice that you met with?
No, that was not. That was, uh, a group that I'm meeting with.
Okay.
Where we we are talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, and Martin's been involved in some of those meetings as well.
Just curious. Um, and I did want to throw out there, too, that, um, the training.
Yes, thanks for reminding. Yes.
It was fantastic. I very much appreciate it. I'd love to see which officers are going to each one, but that's a project for another day.
I would take a significant amount. I'll be honest with you. If we continue to expand upon this, I'm gonna need more staffing, because I, we just do not have the personnel to do it. In fact, one of my staff members made a comment that he's seen the board packet, and he said, I feel bad for whoever had to type up the training material. And I said, yes, it was me, and it took a very long time. We plan on putting this in our annual report. This will come before you every board meeting, and in red will be the most updated information. So you will always have that in front of you, what training we're attending. And normally, I will have the SRO training attached to it as well, but because we're talking about that later, I didn't want to include it yet again, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I like your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, let's move on then. Uh, we're on the six C, which is, uh, village department head staff consultant comments. Anybody's got anything? Uh, we'll go down to D, village board comments. Anybody have anything? Okay. We'll go to seven, communication miscellaneous business. Seven A is approval of the vouchers, and that's gonna be, it's a big one tonight. One million, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight and fifty-three cents. So let's get a motion in a second. Let's get that on the table, and then we'll take your questions. Yeah, Derek. Okay, yep, and then Luke. Okay, so we've got our first and the second. All right, who's got some questions on the vouchers?
Go ahead, Luke, get his hand up first.
Oh, you were gonna steal all my thunder anyways, I figured.
Go right ahead.
All right, uh, two, one, nine, five, Demco operating, I think that's supposed to say supplies, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. I don't know what Demco is.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, but Demco is library operating supplies, specific to libraries.
Yeah.
Two, one, nine, five.
I don't have that invoice in front of me, but we, um, buy supplies for our library, um, processing for new materials and things. I'm guessing that's what it was, um, but I can look into that if that's helpful for you.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Uh, can I keep going?
You can.
All right. Three, nine, zero, six is building inspection permit fees, thirty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight. My question is, are these, are we doing building inspections, uh, on behalf of citizens, and are we being reimbursed for that thirty-one thousand?
That's our contract rate. Is that right, Lisa?
Yeah, that's the contract we have, SafeBuild, that does all of our inspections for us. So for all building permits that we issue, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split on the building permits.
Okay.
They get seventy-five percent and we retain twenty-five percent.
All right, thank you. Any else? Luke, yep? Uh, another one that I had a question about reimbursement was the Wisconsin court fines and assessment. Uh, nine, two, two, five. Um, I was just wondering if that was, uh, we're we're finding somebody, it's a pass-through maybe, or? There's, uh, five items listed there, municipal court cost, penalty surcharges.
Yeah, isn't that a pass-through, Lisa?
Yeah, it's it comes from the court. So there's a report that they print out, um, that shows, like, it's when a citation is issued, it's broken into a bunch of different areas.
Okay.
And then each person gets their part of the pie, the, um, this one is for the state, and then, um, we retain part of it, too, then.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one more, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
I just have to find it. One, zero, eight, five, zero, Revista's serial sub renewal for twenty-twenty-two. So I imagine it's an annual fee, but I didn't know what serial sub renewal was.
Yeah, so, um, we contracted for Revistas to renew all of our magazine subscriptions, so they manage all the renewals for us. We pay once a year, so that's all the magazines that will be, um, buying for twenty-twenty-two. Um, so the village prepays that in twenty-twenty-one, and then that'll be taken out of twenty-twenty-two, uh, funds for next year.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's that's the only question there.
Okay, Luke. All right, who's up next? Jerry?
Unless somebody else has some questions.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay. Number six, fifty-seven, Bartel Enterprises, or it looks like wastewater treatment plant patches in the amount of five thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That just seemed like a lot of money for patches.
What was that number again?
Yeah, Jerry, what's the number?
Six fifty-seven.
Six fifty-seven.
Let me find the invoice for you, Jerry.
And what's a patch?
Well, I don't know.
My question, Jeff's not here.
It's part of the blower upgrade that's happening at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
So that's paying for the, um, road patches that are being done there.
The what patches?
The road patches. So they're repairing the road by the wastewater treatment plant?
Oh, okay, got it. Okay. And then, um, um, I think I know the answer to this, but number my glasses are fogging up. Forty-nine, twenty-seven, Legend of Bergamot. I think that was probably for the golf outing, now that I think about it for a second.
Yep, correct. It's a pass-through. We, so as we make money for it, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, and then, um, um, it's number one, three, five, twelve, Ryan LLC, owner's rep services, four thousand dollars. Is that for the library?
Yeah, Jerry, just because I'm sitting in the back, I get all the questions today. So that is for the the fee for the construction manager. Technically, it's an owner's representative that we hired, so he started, um, in August.
Okay.
Um, so that's what that's for.
So is that gonna get paid for through donations, or is that coming out of your budget, or?
Um, that so far is coming out of the impact fee, or I think it's coming out of the impact fees, um, for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's what'll stay there.
Is that it, Jerry?
That's it for me.
All right. Mike, did you have one? I just want to make sure your hands.
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. All right, so Candy, let's take a voice vote on this, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, got that handled. Seven B, which is lib- library board minutes for informational purposes only, no action. It was in your packet, July twenty-eighth and August eleventh. And then let's go to seven C, which is renewal of the school resource officer program agreement between the Oregon School District and Village of Oregon between September first, twenty-twenty-one and August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, recommendation is to approve as presented. Um, Chief, you want it, because, um, Martin and I have been at some of the, some of the meetings, but you have taken really the heavy load on this one for probably a year, two years, three years, who knows?
Probably about three.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, um, and it it certainly has been the work of a a great team of people. Um, so, yeah, back when I was lieutenant about three years ago-ish, um, we really took this program and flipped it upside down. We started over and recrafted an entire entirely new agreement, really focused on mentoring, um, and the SRO being used to help, uh, mentor's the best way, our youth into making better decisions. You know, the the students that are really struggling specifically. Um, it's it's always gonna be a work in progress, and we've we've made strides with it. Um, and originally, this started just out as an agreement, but as you'll see, uh, there's a few minor changes in the agreement itself, but then as you work through, thank you, Lisa, um, towards the the appendixes. Um, it really starts to dive into the strategies we we've worked through. And we didn't, we just, we didn't just come up with these. We 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 based it off of rationale that's listed there. And, you know, what tasks can be done to start chipping away at some of those goals. Um, and we've already put a lot of that into, uh, motion and seen some success. Um, and a lot of this talks specifically about the SRO, but there is other work going on. Um, I've taken, uh, on a role as well, meeting with some of our youth groups, uh, to really make sure that I'm hearing directly from the youth. I I hear from a lot of people, but, uh, the youth is very important to hear from in in this, with this program. Um, the the last appendix that's attached, I'm sorry, there's two more. Um, the next one that's attached is a a diagram, I don't know if that was B or C. Must be. B, thank you. Um, so appendix B breaks down a a diagram of the different, uh, ways in which our school resource officer is functioning within the school. Uh, obviously, our our goal here is to be building relationship via informal counselor, educator, mentor, and do some preventative action. You know, the truancy is really out of our control. That's at the school's request. Um, and, you know, this last year, year and a half, maybe even two with the pandemic, it's tough to look at this data. But as it started to apply to this position, this new agreement, uh, we've really started to see some major success. And the data we reported. And the data we reported in our last annual report, you know, we, we took a step back and looked at that, and it just really wasn't the right depiction of what the program is doing. So we, we redid the data, and this is what the new product is. And before what it said was, uh, something to the effect of law enforcement action, I believe. And that could be considered many different things. That could, some people could jump right to, oh, police are enforcement-heavy, so you're just in here arresting people, so this is what that means. Or it could be you're just writing tickets all the time. So we broke it down. Uh, so you'll see, how many times did we issue a citation between September twenty-twenty and June of twenty-twenty-one? One time. How many times did we take someone into custody at a time? Zero times. So, you know, I, and I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, before, um, I got more involved in this program, we were more enforcement-heavy. The goal was to look at this differently. And this is a direct result of that. I think we're gonna continue to improve. And what I think that's, um, involved now that I think is really key is, I'm meeting with the, the school on a regular basis, and we're talking about, how are things going? What can be done differently? Are we focusing on the right issues? Do we need to pivot? And I think that allows for us to change in the moment and be this, for this program to be what these, the students need, so. Um, the, the third appendix, Appendix C, is the training that we've been able to, um, have Officer Caraco go to just to keep him finely tuned with all of the, uh, hot or higher volume type calls that, uh, he's being utilized for. So obviously, mental health is one of them. Vaping, uh, substance, any sort of substance abuse, uh, trauma. So we were, that was not an easy training to find, but, uh, helping people through trauma, uh, we now have that training in there as well. But as you can see, we, we've been very aggressive with trying to help make sure he's got all those tools, uh, at his fingertips. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Chief, just, just a comment from me, having been somewhat involved in this, from the first one and this one. This is a very much, I think, better, much changed, I think, um, outcomes. You know, what are we expecting to sort of see where we didn't sort of have, as you said earlier, it was just sort of this four or five-page agreement with none of that. Whereas this has some of that. So, you know, probably each one is gonna get better and better, but this is a, a much improved from the, from the first time.
Thank you.
All right, questions for Chief? Yeah. Mike?
Uh, first, let me commend you, I really like the move away from enforcement and towards community-oriented policing. I think that's a much better approach, um,
Thank you.
in general, but particularly in schools. I saw that the school district covers seven hundred hours of the cost of the SRO. Uh, how many hours does the SRO actually in the school systems? I mean, this isn't a full-time job, is it?
No, no, it's, uh, just the school year. And in fact, tonight they had requested him for a meeting, so they're paying him, they're gonna pay us his overtime fee. So any sporting event outside of the normal day of a school day, um, they actually pay us that overtime through Lisa, her assistant. I don't know the exact hours he works, but it, um, it is just the school year. Then he goes back out onto patrol during the summer.
Okay, so is the school basically Lisa?
So the number of hours, it's basically a hundred and sixty-two and a half hours a month for the nine months, so it's over fourteen hundred hours that he's actually at the school.
So we're basically splitting, uh,
Yeah.
the cost with, uh, the school district, thank you.
All right, and Mike's there, or you got more?
I think so.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Jerry?
Yeah, I wanna commend the chief on her oversight of this project. I remember, anybody that was on the board three, four years ago knows that this project went through some turmoil. And, uh, the, the chief has, uh, calmed that right down to the point now where the, the school wants this program. And I think it is a very good thing, and I think I'm glad that, that, uh, we're able to bring this to the school and, you know, splitting it with them, that's a good deal. So thank you very much.
Okay, yeah. Derek?
Uh, yeah, I'd also like to say, say thanks to the chief for your many years of work on this now. And it has come a long way, and I very much appreciate the fact that it's being revisited, at this point, semi-annually. I do have a question about Appendix A, um, where it says, uh, strategies or success indicators. Wearing an OSD polo shirt, that kinda threw up some issues in my, in my head. I was just wondering what the, the rationale for that was.
So with the survey, survey that they conducted, and again, I, I am not involved in the survey. I don't see any on the crowd anymore, but, um, they have been talking with students and faculty, and the feeling was is it would be nice to have him in more of a, uh, dress-down attire. So he wears, uh, typically like, uh, Oregon school polo and, uh, dress pants. It's more like business casual type look.
Just, uh, being as I do have kids in the district, is there any way that we can have that to have a Oregon Police Department polo shirt? Just so he's a little bit more visible, so kids know he's not a teacher walking around? I understand you have your, your firearm and your badge on there too?
Right, yeah, he has his badge on, I can certainly talk to Attorney Jonin about that. That was at the request of them, though, that it, and they actually provided it to him. But we can, we can talk about that. We also provide a polo from the police department, he could wear that. But it, it felt like there was also this kind of thought behind it of, then it, he feels also like he's a part of the faculty there too, you know? And there's that team kind of feeling.
And I can understand that. My main concern with that actually stemmed from the last school board meeting, 'cause I went in there and I walked in there, and I completely didn't notice you sitting there. You were in, uh, basically a polo shirt with your, your, you were sitting down with your firearm and your badge on your belt, and I, I didn't notice you. And I am just thinking for a younger kid to walk into a room with three or four administrators, including the SRO sitting in the corner, it would be nice for them to know that when they're, if they're being questioned or anything, that his presence is, is there.
Okay.
As opposed to having dressed kinda like a teacher.
Yeah, I can absolutely pass it along to the school district. So how we've, how I've always done this is I, I simply ask the school district, their administration, what do you want? And if they tell me in uniform, that's what we do, because we're, we're trying to facilitate a request by them. And this is a unanimous request by their school board. So I'll let them know that, that was certainly pointed out, but
I totally appreciate the follow-up, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If no one else.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Couple things. So, um, first question. Do you just have one officer who's really assigned as the SRO now, uh, and is doing all the SRO work?
I would say yes, so it's just him. Um, I will be honest, though, I get pulled in sometimes, and, uh, if I'm not available, my lieutenant. But more often not, it's me.
Okay. You know, I spent a lot of time on this with, uh, chief and, and others, and, um, I'll have to say that, um, making this work, um, well, is one of the more complicated things I have seen as, in my role as an attorney, working with municipalities. It's really gratifying to see, um, the kind of deliberate, kind of strategic approach, I think, that's being taken here by both the department and the school to try and really work on this. And, uh, it's coming through, I mean, I'm seeing that, um, people are working on this to, to try and figure out how to make this work. And I would just say it's very gratifying and, and it's not, this is a tough one. I mean, I remember really struggling trying to figure out how to make this work. And so congratulations on what looks like, um, great progress. I think it, I, given what I'm seeing, um, I could see other departments looking to, um, recruit your SRO. And I, I'd be thinking about having some more bench strength if possible.
Yeah, we, we
That's why I asked if you only have one, and, and I, and you want that one person to have that presence, but boy, I'd be looking at, who, who else can you be bringing along, um, so that you have a little depth at that position?
Yeah, it's, um, it's interesting to say that, uh, I've had other departments within Dane County reach out wanting what we were doing as far as our agreement, the strategies, um, because they are trying to look to, uh, improve their programs as well. But yes, I've, I've had the same thoughts as well. I, you know, I don't, we, we have, uh, you can, so we can put all the words on paper we want in an agreement. We can do all the strategies we want, we can send this officer to all of the training. But it's, it's him who's gotta put it in motion. And school, the school world and law enforcement world are really different. And kudos to Alex Caraco for being able to make all of this happen. Um, and kudos to the administration and the school principals, 'cause, uh, this has gone so well. And to, to hear the, the school board unanimously vote in favor of it. Um, and then they, they spoke, you know, and Derek was at the, the school board meeting, they spoke so highly, they, we got some really great compliments about the program, so yes, I, I would agree, we've come a long way.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, um, I, I'll just echo what's been said, this is really tremendous, you know, compared to where we were, uh, just a couple of years ago. Very, very different place, so, uh, this is great. I like the, the very concrete goals that are set, that are positive goals, that are things that we want to see, you know, uh, and, and those are attainable, and, um, I like all the training. Uh, really, this has been a great collaboration, um, and I agree with Matt, gotta make sure we get some depth and, you know, uh, hang on to the good people that we have too. The only, and this is very, very tiny, tiny complaint, but, um, I'm channeling a little Jeff Rau here, kind of, uh, situation where we're approving the, the contract like two weeks after it's already in effect. And any chance we could get the school board to, you know, get this done a little sooner in the year so that we're not doing that? It, it doesn't look good, 'cause if we did have a problem, it's a little late to do anything, it's already going on. So, uh, I don't know if we need to do this in June, maybe, at the end of the school year? Do an evaluation and then approve it for the next year sooner, or?
I, I think it was on their agenda earlier than
Yeah, that was certainly
when it got signed, they, they, it got kinda derailed a little bit.
It, it did, I think with the pandemic and then the mass conversations
Yeah.
and trying to figure that out. But I certainly had the impression that they wanted to have this wrapped up before school started. It was just, this pandemic, I think we're still all in trying to prioritize and, yeah.
So if we approve it, Amanda, I'll, I'm gonna sign it before I leave tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, like I said, it's minor, uh, you know, I, I support it.
Okay. All right, so
Mr. President?
Yes?
Sorry, there's one more question. One of the things that, um, we, we discussed earlier when we were working on kind of re, rebooting this whole project was, the need for enhanced communication, not just at the staff level, but also, I thought, you know, between the village board and school board members to periodically, you know, have more dialogue about this. Is that, where does that stand? Is that, 'cause I know, my sense is, obviously, most of the dialogue and work is at the staff level. You and your counterparts, uh, you, your, you and your staff and your counterparts at a staff level. Is the village, is there any need for, has, has the village board and the school board still maintain?
So, so even with the, the previous one, and Chief, please chime in, when we did have it, we actually did meet.
Yep.
We tried to meet quarterly, and then we had some Zoom meetings, how things were going, and I think that's going to continue, is that?
Yeah, that was the, I think they're called the SRO Work Group Meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, yeah, they went really, the last one went really well.
Yes.
So what that was, was Randy sat in to represent the village board, and Martin was there, and then Christopher Landigan, the school board president. And then they brought in a new school board member as well, Mary.
Mary, yeah.
Um, and then a, a few of the admin, and then, of course, Attorney Jonin and I. And then Attorney Jonin and I just kind of explained, you know, where we're at, and, uh, they gave us some more feedback and gave us some more notes to go back and look at the agreement one more time. Uh, but we, that's, I think, how we're commun, that's where that's
That's continuing.
Yeah.
That's, that's good, 'cause I think that was missing before.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so the school board has, has already approved, we just need to have a motion in a second, let's get this approved. Jerry?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And Luke? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll get that signed tonight. Perfect. All right, let's go to seven D, which is Architectural Engineering Services Proposal for Sketchworks Architecture LLC for Village, New Village Hall Remodel. All the stuff was in your packet, anybody have any questions about the, the remodel? We got Martin's here, yeah, Mike?
So as I look at the milestones on here, they've already started to pass, have they begun already?
We have done some initial meetings with them to give them an idea of what we're looking at doing. So yeah, we're, we've passed along what we would like to see, and so now it's just a matter of getting this approved and them starting their work.
Me? Anybody else, yeah, Amanda?
So if I'm, I just am wanting to understand the scope of this. This is architectural, like, uh, interior design kind of, uh, things. It, I mean, would this include like the, um, the audiovisual upgrade for the village boardroom meetings and, you know, that kinda stuff too, or?
Yeah, so this is, um, so this is entirely, entirely related to the remodel of the new village hall, so the second floor, a lot of it's actually unfinished, so like the new village boardroom is completely unfinished, so we need to obviously finish that room. There's some other modifications to, like, the community room downstairs, we wanna put in a new, uh, secure entrance and make some other modifications, um, throughout the building. So what this is, is it's actually, it's, it's putting together the architectural and the construction plans for bidding. So we assume this project will be over twenty-five thousand, certainly. So, uh, what Sketchworks does, they put the bid packet together, give out for bid, and then we'll do the construction work in spring, or in winter and spring. So the audio and video isn't necessarily a component of that, but, um, certainly planning the design of the room so that it functions with what equipment that we want will be important. But certainly we'll use, uh, an audiovisual vendor to, to actually supply that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so, um, yeah, Jerry?
Lisa, where are we gonna hit this, uh, sixty-nine thousand dollars for?
Um, when we did our borrowing this year, if you remember, we, um, borrowed four million dollars, three million dollars was for the purchase of the building, and one million dollars is for the renovation of the building, in addition to some of the work that needs to be done to get ready for the senior center.
So it's coming out of borrowed funds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, otherwise we'll take a motion in a second. Get this approved, Mike?
Just make the motion.
Okay, very good, thank you. Jerry? Thank you, second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. How are we doing, everybody? No break yet, are we okay? We've got a little bit to go. All right, we'll keep going, let me know if we need to take a break. Seven E, which is City of Madison Police Training Center, use agreement. Chief, it kinda basically looks like going from sixty dollars to seventy-five is?
Yes, it, it's a inflation, um, with upkeep of the facility for the most part. But the memo's pretty self-explanatory, and, uh, we, we do training at the City of Madison Police Department Training Center, as well as the Dane Counties. This one was up for, for re-signing, so.
Okay, yeah, Jerry?
Uh, Chief, is that all your training is now up there, or just, uh, certain things, or?
Yeah, just certain things. Um, and typically we use this facility for, uh, especially when it's cold, to stay warm. If we have to shoot, we'll, we'll do it over at the training center.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get a motion in a second. Amanda? And Derek? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, seven F, waiver reimbursement amount related to the five-year repayment agreement for Landon, is it these?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, was this a surprise? This didn't last very long, did it?
So, and, and let me, uh, further explain, um, so it's always a, a risk when we have to send someone through the academy. 'Cause even before you get to the academy, there's a phase of testing you have to go through. I will put it this way, unfortunately, uh, and, and don't get me wrong, Landon was incredibly excited to come work for us, but unfortunately, that process just did not work out for him. And, um, it prevented him from getting into the academy. In, in my opinion, Landon did the right thing, uh, because we wouldn't have been able to get him into another academy till probably January of next year. Um, in in my opinion, Landon did the right thing, uh, because we wouldn't have been able to get him into another academy till probably January of next year. Um, and he did not want to leave the Village of Oregon Police Department without an officer. So he he chose to resign, um, so that we could move forward with trying to get that spot filled.
Okay. All right, yeah, Derek's got a question.
Is he gonna try and return at some point, or?
I I told him, um, I welcome him to apply again.
All right, let's have a motion in a second to approve the waiver, please. All right, Luke and Amanda, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Seven G, revisions to school crossing guard job description. Uh, recommendation is to approve as presented. That was in our packet. Chief, do you want, do you need to say anything, or is it self-explanatory?
So I I think, uh, so it was Derek that had brought this uh concern up. So I, you know, the job description, I'm sure all of you have read through, but really, this this came down to uh the equipment issued. So in here now, it it states that the type R-Class Three vest is given to them. That's at the recommendation of, Lisa might have to help me out with the guy's name. He's the safety. What?
Vince?
Vince, he's the safety coordinator that the, the village is contracted on. Um, and then what we do is we do provide them a stop sign compliant with Wisconsin state law. Uh, we're slowly trying to uh incorporate the light-up signs if they want them. There is very strict guidance by Wisconsin, uh, in what kind of signage you have to have, and then where the lighting is on the signs. Um, so some want them, some don't. Um, there's always the challenge, because as as much as it looks like those signs are light, they're not. And then the wind hits them, especially on a cold windy day and your hands are cold, it can be difficult to hold up. Well, those light-up signs are heavier, because there's mechanisms inside of it to help it light up. And then uh, some of the issues with it is with the cold, sometimes it won't light. And then secondly, sometimes it'll lose its charge, things like that. Um, so really what we do, uh, the the rest of the the job descriptions, you know, traffic cones, we we provide those if they if they want them. And then uh, other equipment items, we we consider upon request, uh, such as cleats for the ice and snow. Um, each crossing guard kind of has their own wants and, you know, and things they don't want. Um, some we find don't want a lot of equipment, because they have to keep it at their home. And they they, some of them walk to their location, we'll, we'll do the crossing and then walk home. So we we really try to accommodate uh when we can. Um, stepping, even when I was a lieutenant, I would attend uh the crossing guard meetings, and and I can certainly confirm that, uh, so Rudy Trace, our support services supervisor, uh, directly supervises the crossing guards. And every year before the school year starts, she has a meeting with them. Um, they cover a few, you know, commonly asked questions, common concerns. And then uh, she certainly takes that as a point to just check in with them, ask them, do you need anything? Do you need any equipment? Um, and so this year, a few of them requested new vests, just because of wear and tear. Uh, we're getting a few more light-up signs, and I believe one of them lost the charger for a light-up sign. So that's what was uh tweaked in the job description, and so now this is the newest version.
Okay.
I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, Derek?
I'll just say thanks for updating it, and I spoke with Rudy about this on Saturday. I was a little surprised no one wanted a winter coat, but thanks for taking care of it either way.
You bet.
Okay, all right, let's uh, let's have a motion to approve as presented, please. Jerry and Derek? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven H, authorized sale of K-9. Is it Vende? Am I missing that right? Vende? Um, to Officer Josh Coleman, who I bet is in the back. Is that right, Chief?
Uh, yeah, so I asked um Officer Coleman to come with Vende, because I don't know how many of you have actually gotten an opportunity to meet uh Officer Coleman and or uh Vende. Um, I'll be honest with you, this was a hard memo to write. Um, I have an amazing staff, and and Vende is definitely part of that staff. Uh, Josh, do you want to come on up so they can? Yes, yes. So, um, we, uh, Josh and I reviewed the side letter. That's an agreement between the union and the Village of Oregon, and in the side agreement, um, it's that states in there that he and I can decide if we want to extend uh the term of that side agreement. So we have decided to take it to October thirty-first, uh, the reason being, sorry, uh, the reason being, um, that date would actually mark her eleventh year here with us as our very first K-9 officer. So, um, I don't, Josh, if you want to share anything or say anything?
You're doing a big job.
Um, as part of the agreement, and and certainly this would need the village board's approval, uh, upon her retirement, uh, her last shift, which, so it, the memo is worded that it starts on Sunday, October thirty-first, because Officer Vende here and Officer Coleman are both night shifters, so they, this will take them into the first. But uh, at the end of that shift, then um I would ask the board to approve that we sell Vende to Officer Coleman for a dollar, so that she can live the remainder of her life uh and happy in retirement with her family.
Absolutely. All right, somebody want to make that motion? Mike and Amanda, any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Congratulations.
Randy?
Yes?
I just want to thank Officer Coleman and Vende, because for the great job they've done with this program. Are you gonna, is there gonna be a a Vende too?
Uh, yes, definitely. Um, you know, I'll be honest with you, Officer Coleman, you know, he's not one with words. He's a very quiet guy. But he uh created, so he was honestly the sole reason that this program even was built the way it was, and is done as well as it has. If it wasn't for him, my answer might be different. But because he has gotten this program to where it's at, and has built such a solid foundation, um, and and what it's offering to our community already, we can only build upon it. It's gonna be even better. Um, and I don't know how it could be better, because it it's done such a great job. Um, our our fundraisers are very well attended. Um, uh, all of our community knows Vende. Officer Coleman, uh, he does a lot of public relations with the K-9. I mean, who who couldn't like Vende? She's such a sweetheart. Um, and uh, you know, we're gonna bring some data to you to show you at a future meeting how successful she's been. Um, she's, you know, she's not just a drug dog by any means. Um, she's, she's found people that have been missing. Um, she's found uh critical pieces of evidence that have been thrown out as a person's running away. Um, so she's done all of these great things. She's tracked, um, and so uh, we we are gonna bring that information forward to you. Uh, and we're gonna actually use our intern, our high school intern that I talked to you about, uh, probably a couple of months ago now. Um, the whole reason she wants to get into law enforcement is because she wants to be a K-9 officer. And so we're gonna have her give the presentation, um, because, you know, you're, we want to draw in uh people who are interested in law enforcement, and, you know, to have these opportunities exist is key, very key.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She's ready to go.
She's gotta get to work.
All right, so seven I, we are taking off the agenda. Chief, I I hear our candidate maybe took another position?
She did, and uh, but Rudy, she's fantastic. She is on it. She's uh trying to talk someone else into applying.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you know any, any, of anyone that's interested in being a crossing guard, uh, we're happy to uh receive their application.
Okay. All right, let's go to seven J, which is uh Resolution Number Twenty-One Forty-four, Resolution Authorizing Village Administrator to Act As A Representative To The Village Of Oregon And Sign Submit Documents For Department Natural Resources Recycling Grant Program. I think the information, the memo and stuff, Martin was in the packet. I don't know if you, we, anybody have any questions about that? So Martin will sign the the contracts. Yeah, Jerry?
What exactly will this money be used for, Martin? Do you know?
So this is used to offset the cost for the village's recycling program, so curbside pickup, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if no other questions, we'll take a motion in a second. All right, Mike, Derek, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. All right, we're on seven, we're getting there. Seven K, Resolution Number Twenty-One Forty-three, Authorizing Resolution Of The Urban Forestry Grant And Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Grant Programs. Uh, this is a, if you you remember, this year we had, we put money in the budget for the terrorist trees. Jeff Rau and I have written, it was in the packet, have written the startup grant with the DNR that we'll submit uh to continue that next year. So that's what was in the packet, so we're looking for a recommendation so we can um submit all the paperwork to DNR. All right, Derek and Jerry, any other questions or?
I'll just have a comment. Thank you for writing that grant.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah. All right. I think I did first and second. I got it, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. All right, uh, L is Cost Reimbursement Agreement With Ed Hefty For Four Twenty-Three North Baroque Avenue. I think that was in the packet as well. This is typically, we do these uh with developers when, on a project, so nothing unusual about this. Anybody want to make a motion in a second? Amanda? Give a second, somebody? All right, Luke, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. M is Resolution Twenty-One Forty, or Twenty-One Forty-One, Resolution Requesting Exemption From The County Library Tax. Uh, recommended motion is to approve as presented. Uh, Derek is making a motion. Luke is seconding. Anybody have any questions? Um, Jennifer is here, if we do. I think it's kind of, we do this every year, don't we, Jennifer?
This is an annual.
The annual thing, okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. N is Memorandum Understanding Between The Oregon CARES Community Coalition And The Village Of Oregon. Information was also in your packet. I see we have Amy and uh. Cynthia, sorry, I was thinking of your last name. Uh, here if we have any questions. Otherwise, we'll take a motion in a second to approve as presented. Derek's making a motion, Amanda's seconding. Any other discussion on this one? Mike's got a question.
Yeah, how much um, how much time and and stuff does it take from the village to administer this? The finances and things?
They're responsible for all the reporting that's done. I just supply them with the reports on a monthly basis, so they can submit it for reimbursement. So like, a couple minutes?
Oh, okay.
So pretty good, yeah, good. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we're down to O, which is uh Related Evaluation Services Contract. Catalyst Evaluation Group And The Oregon CARES Community Coalition And The Village Of Oregon For Coalition Evaluation Services. The information was also in our packet on this. Um, if no questions, we'll take a motion in a second. Amanda and Derek, any questions? Mike?
Yeah, so this is to develop uh an evaluation on program on on how effective Oregon CARES is?
In in part. Um, the federal grant requires us to have um a database management program in place. Catalyst is helping us create the database and then help us create the management program for that database. What we do collects a lot of data, and it needs to be, the feds say we have to manage it.
Okay.
So this is, this is included, it it is, it is an already approved budget line item in the grant. And um actually, you will hopefully, uh, in about six months or a year, see the out, some of the outcomes of this, because they will be generating interim reports, helping us to generate interim reports, so you can see the impact that we've had in the community.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Jerry. Wait, Cynthia?
Just as a point of information for anyone that might be watching, could you just give a brief overview of what?
Sure, sure. So, um, I'm gonna make Amy come up here too. Uh, uh, Oregon CARES Community Coalition started in two thousand nine as a group that was interested in preventing substance use among youth. Um, and we've been sort of struggling along with this, um, getting uh funding here and there. Uh, last year, we wrote for this federal grant program. There are about seven hundred uh community coalitions across the country who receive this funding. It is through the, the executive order of the, uh, executive uh division of the, I'm trying to remember what O-N-D-C-P stands for. It doesn't matter. It's through this, under the CDC, so it's part of prevention work that is done at a national level. Um, these grants are five years, um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year. They provide training. They provide training not just for us, but for um people within the community. Um, we've actually been able to send um a police officer to a training, uh, in part because of the training that we got.
Amanda.
And Amanda was at one of our trainings, a very long training. Um, so our, our point here is not to prevent, uh, not to make this town dry by any means. It is to help make sure that we are a community where kids are able to make healthy choices and they can thrive.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Jerry, the only thing I think you might have missed was it is a drug-free communities grant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any questions for these ladies? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. We're on to eight, Report Of Committees. Items are for discussion. We don't have any at this time. Nine is Unfinished Business. Nine A is A Zoning Text Amendment For Parking Requirements. We have a memo from Elise and uh ordinance draft. Elise, do you want to say anything, or? This is basically is, next would go back to the Plan Commission, is that correct?
Correct. So this is a follow-up to the request from the village board at your August meeting to um adopt some changes to our zoning code for specific categories to incorporate um parking requirements that are what Board Atkinson um requires. So the attached ordinance shows that language and the proposed changes. Um, I also just provide a little bit of background, since I wasn't able to be part of the conversations this summer, to sort of trying to put into context the impact that parking minimums have on development, um, when those are requested to be changed, to be further reduced. Um, and then also just providing some perspective as to the numbers that came before you, where we kind of got those. Um, that national standards is really a combination of a lot of different data sources. And then anytime that uh the zoning code is written, it's really individualized to that particular community. So just wanted to provide some background information on um some work that was done, and a lot of uh time that was spent by staff and consultants and um, you know, planning commissioners and board members over the last couple of months. And just encouraging village board and planning commission too to kind of, again, put things into perspective and and realize some of the other um goals that we have for our village and um ways that we could further improve our zoning code to help um achieve some of those goals. So, uh, in terms of schedule, uh, again, the ordinance, this looks like it incorporates the changes that were suggested. Um, we would do a public hearing notice over the next couple of weeks. Bring this to our October seventh planning commission meeting for a public hearing. And then they would make a recommendation, yea or nay, and then it would move forward to the um October eighteen village board meeting for adoption, and then we would incorporate any changes into the code and get that updated.
Okay, so you don't need any action from us tonight, but there, there might be questions. Anybody? Yeah.
Um, just a procedural question about the parking uh ordinances, the the hearing. So the hearing goes to the planning commission.
Yes.
And they have already, they they sent us recommendations, which we changed and we sent back. So the public hearing, the, is the, is the, whatever the, comes from the planning commission just gonna be the results of the public hearing, as opposed to a recommendation from them? Like, I I guess I'm trying to figure out the function, because we've already heard from the planning commission, so now we're hearing from the public, why? So, now we're hearing from the public, why is it just going through the planning commission? A little clarification.
Go ahead, Matt.
I'll, I'll share kind of my take on this from a procedural standpoint. So, the plant commission previously held a public hearing on a particular ordinance amendment. Did have a public hearing on that proposal. So, there was actually draft language that was presented to the plant commission for the hearing, which is different from this language. So, the pub, the plant commission held a public hearing on particular proposed amendments to the code, made recommendations to the village board. Those came to the board. And the board adopted an ordinance change with, I believe, one, one change to the, what would have been recommended by the plant commission. But the change, that the ordinance that was adopted by the village board was clearly within the scope of what the plant commission considered and what the public hearing addressed. Okay? So, now where we are, and I think maybe board action might be appropriate tonight. The issue tonight is whether the board wants to initiate a new text amendment process. Whether the board wants to approve or, or, or approve moving forward with other specific text amendments to the zoning court. And the board has the ability to do that. If the board does that, then the ordinance requires that we then transmit to that, to the plant commission that they have to hold a public hearing on those new proposed text amendments initiated by you, not by them. So, they would hold a public hearing on those amendments and take public input. And then the plant commission could recommend either approval of the proposed text amendments or not approval of those text amendments, or they could recommend approving those text amendments with some modifications. Their recommendation would then come to you all and you would have the ability to take action, either approving what the plant commission has recommended or approving something different from that or not approving what comes before you at that point. So, we're essentially trying to, well, tonight, the question for you is whether to initiate a, basically, a new text amendment process that covers a lot more territory than what the plant commission considered at the last public hearing. The, the ordinance that was presented to them at the last public hearing was a, was a narrower focus, I think. That's my understanding. Elise, is there anything I said that you thought was off base there?
No, I think that pretty much covered it. Again, you can see through the ordinance, this touches a lot of the youth categories, I think, that were not proposed to be changed previously or adjust the number to what we saw in the Fort Atkinson code. But yeah, just because it's not, it's just part of the process to do a zoning text amendment, a public hearing is, is required. So, just moving through the process, give the public another chance to provide comments on these specific changes, planning commission recommendation, and I think regardless of recommendation, you know, yea or nay, it still moves forward to the village board and then we would just report on kind of how the planning commission had their discussion and presented their recommendation.
Essentially, in Matt's opinion, the, the changes that were, were presented at the last meeting were significant enough that we just need to restart the process. And the process is going back for a public hearing, getting plant commission recommendation, then village board approval.
Yeah. Because the, the, the last public, as I understand it, the last public hearing on the parking ordinance changes that, that were approved previously didn't consider a whole bunch of these things. There, there was no, the public had no opportunity to comment on or to see these proposed changes. And there were enough of them and they were substantial enough so that, at least we, we, I believe that, yeah, we had to have another public hearing.
All right. So, Matt, what is our, help us with this. What's the motion?
I think the motion would be to, to refer this proposed amendment to the plant commission to initiate a proposed, a text amendment as presented, to refer it to the plant commission.
Okay. So, Jerry?
Yes, is this, am I hearing that staff is recommending doing this also?
This is a response to the board request.
Okay. Yeah, so this, this ordinance that's written here incorporates all of the changes that were presented by trustee Wunsch at the last meeting.
Okay.
So, we took that, it was kind of like a spreadsheet, and then we transposed it into ordinance format. And so, that was the vote that was taken by the board to do that. And so, now we're presenting it back, confirming this is what you want, initiate the zoning text amendment process.
Okay. But that was, my question was, is staff in agreement with this process?
With the process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion in a second to move this along? Jerry? Motion?
Motion.
To move it along?
Second.
Second, or we'll take Mike's, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Okay. We're on to nine B, response to COVID-19 related village policies. Martin did a memo for us. Martin, don't let me say something I'm not supposed to. But I think you said basically you're recommending that we follow the current Dane County guidelines. And you also have talked to your staff and they would like us to continue as what we are doing now with masks.
Yeah, so, at the last meeting, Amanda brought up potentially discussing going back to virtual meetings and then going back and looking at it. And with, with the Delta variant and some of these things kind of staying with us, I think it would be a good opportunity to re-adopt a COVID response policy. We had one previously at the onset of the pandemic. We had some emergency orders that were issued and some policies that were put into place. Those expired and were repealed earlier this year as, as things were starting to look a little bit better. But now we've kind of gotten back to a place where it would be helpful to have a written policy again. So, what I've done is I've, I've put together a policy that really just follows public health Dane County and all the things that they recommend to have in a COVID-19 policy. So, following whatever orders or guidelines they, they issue on face coverings, encouraging vaccinations, how to respond to different exposures, different scenarios that occur, whether it's the staff or the public. Encouraging flexible scheduling and services, making sure that we're keeping up with our ongoing hygiene and cleaning protocols. And then, of course, we have a few unique things such as, you know, the senior center has their own COVID-19 policy. Interesting one that kind of came up internally after the village board had motioned to verbally put the mask order back in place was what about New Village Hall? How are they affected by this? So, kind of identifying that and, and at this point, letting the tenants decide their own response policies. And then I, I did talk to, as Randy mentioned, I talked to the village staff individually about their thoughts on going back to virtual meetings. And I think generally what I received was, you know, there's recognition of the concern. But from what I heard, and I agree, I, I think the lean was we prefer to be in person just because of a few reasons, and I highlighted them there, you know, with the budget process coming up. We feel it'd be more productive to be in person. Obviously, there's a lot of back and forth and Q and A. We've obviously advanced in our cleaning and hygiene protocols with masks and barriers. And we run the UV disinfectant thing in here before and after meetings and have hand sanitizers and Kleenexes and things like that. And there are options for the public as far as participating. And if we need to make accommodations for people, we can certainly do so. So, that's, that's our take. Obviously, it's your guys' judgment. And we can, we can go with whatever you desire.
So, Martin, are you, we're asking basically the motion might be to retain the, is the current guidelines of Dane County?
So, I would say, my suggestion, my recommendation would be to approve this policy and then whatever you prefer for virtual meetings, to include that. If it's to stay in person, then we wouldn't have anything there. But if you want to go to virtual, then defining what you want to do and for how long and any other parameters of that, I guess.
Okay. Question, yeah, Mike?
So, I'm interested in having a safe workplace. And I assume that we have some of our employees that aren't vaccinated. What are your thoughts about mandatory testing, periodic mandatory testing?
Could look, I mean, if that's something that the board wants to do, we'd have to, we'd want to investigate it, obviously, and look at it from a legal perspective, but I haven't spent any time looking into it, so I, I don't know.
So, you wouldn't have no idea what the staff would feel about that or?
You'd have to check.
Yeah, it's, it's something that hasn't come up internally. I haven't heard it from anybody. But yeah, I mean, if that's something that the board is interested in, we can certainly have that conversation.
All right, other comments? Yeah?
I just, I like the write-up. Thank you for putting it together. And I would recommend following Madison Dane County Public Health guidelines as we all have been. And I agree, I think we can continue in-person meetings with six feet of distance, with recommendation of vaccinations, with mask use, et cetera. This may be too challenging to, I don't even know if you would need to put it in there, but is there anything? You have, I think it's Roman numerals, seven virtual public meetings, question marks. Do we have to put verbiage in there that says we will continue in person? Or could we just put something in there where Madison Public, Dane County Public Health recommends virtual meetings to follow those guidelines? I don't, I don't know what that would look like, but that's my own question.
I think, Martin, you would, you would want us to put whether or not we want virtual or in face-to-face meetings, correct?
Yeah, I think what we do is, if you want to approve it without any virtual meeting component, I think you would just motion to adopt without that section. I think if, if there is some guidance that we should not be meeting in person anymore or, or, you know, stay at home or something like that, I think we can revisit it at that time. Obviously, we still have the, the power to declare emergency orders. Randy has that power and the chief has the power in his absence. So, if those things happen, we can be nimble in response to that and certainly check with the village board when we need to.
Okay. Yeah, Matt?
I just have a question because I can't, I, I've worked on so many policies regarding virtual meetings in the last six to 12 months. I just can't remember where we are in Oregon. Didn't, did we adopt a policy that allows the local trustees to choose to attend in, virtually if they want?
We did not.
We didn't get there yet.
The reason why we stopped that conversation was the move to the new village hall.
Yeah, technology.
There was, we didn't want to invest any money in technology in this space, and so we did not adopt any rules.
So, if I could just follow up on that then. So, if the, if the board's decision is to continue in-person meetings, then it's, it's not complicated, number one. They're in person. And number two, under current rules, which I believe we probably adopt Robert's rules, then you are required to appear in person. You don't have the flexibility to appear virtually and be counted for corner purposes. For example, if the board wanted to have a structure where it's an in-person meeting, but you want to authorize people to appear virtually, meaning board members, then we would need to actually amend, create some new rules that would authorize that, at least on a permanent basis. And that's where we kind of stopped, that, you know?
You went on vacation and then when you got back, you were going to contact me and we were going to hash out some preliminary ones and then, and then bring it to the board. But we haven't done that yet because it just found out you're back, so.
Yeah. And Matt, I, I think we didn't have the technology to do, is that right? Am I, am I wrong on that?
There was certainly a technology component, an interest in how technology fits into the picture. There were lots of good questions, so.
I know we talked about making sure that we had that capability at the new village hall.
So, I just want you to be aware that under current, where we are today from a rules standpoint and without taking action to change anything, in-person attendance is required. If you'd like to do something else, we need to know that, number one, and then we need to figure out how to implement that procedurally, either on an emergency basis, which is what we did last year. You, the village board adopted emergency orders that allowed us to operate differently. I don't know that we, if you feel that there's urgency, we could operate on an emergency basis again. If you think that you have time to work this out in a more deliberate fashion, then we can take more time and, and look at rules that would have more lasting impact.
All right. I'm just going to say for, for my own personal, I, I'm fine with retaining the guidelines for Madison. And I'm okay with what we are doing now in, in person with the masks and taking precautions. So, I, I, I like it simple myself. Jerry and Amanda?
No, I agree with Randy and Luke in what they say, and especially during budget time. I think it's important that we're all in the same room when we go through this budget because we're going to have some major decisions to make. And I know when I'm at home doing a virtual meeting, there are all kinds of distractions. And I have a hard time focusing. And maybe I'm unique in that way. But I, I, I need to be in this room with my colleagues so I can, I, I work better, I guess is what I'm saying, when I'm in the same room. So, that's my opinion.
Okay. Amanda?
I was going to say, you got to go in a room where you can close the door and keep your cats out.
Oh, yeah. They don't, here, here.
All right, Amanda, you're up.
Yeah, so, part of my motivation for this is not so much for me. I mean, I could really personally go either way. I'm, I was hearing from some constituents, some, that people aren't comfortable sitting in here for, for a meeting. You know, they don't have the dividers that we have. And some people just aren't comfortable and, and that was more of a reaction to, to that, first of all. And second of all, it's keeping an eye on the numbers, and the numbers are going up. Dane, Dane County hospitals are filling up, this Delta variant and now the Mu variant or Mew, I don't know how to say it. But, you know, they're, they're here. The Mew variant has already been found in Wisconsin. And I don't want this to be an endless cycle of, of fear where we're never coming back in person. But I think it maybe depends on the numbers. And I, I think as part of a policy that we set, maybe we should say like, look, if, if the numbers go up, you know, we, we should be talking about having virtual meetings for public safety. You know, I mean, we might all be comfortable with that, but clearly some people in our, our community are not. So, that's where it was coming from. And I don't know if that changes anybody's view. I mean, I'm okay with being in person, but then what about people who aren't comfortable?
And I think, I think Amanda, Martin kind of addresses that in, under his virtual meetings thing about people being able to submitting written comments and being presented in the packet or handed out. So, I'm not saying that that's the extensive, only way to do it, but he, he does present some options.
He does, and those are, those are valid. But anybody who's come before the village board before knows that written comments are not the same as an interaction of being here and answering questions in real time, talking to an agenda item. You know, you know, we don't have that many people here, and I'm not saying I had like hundreds of people contacting me. But, you know, that was where it was coming from. So, I mean, you know, people still want to be in person.
Fair enough. Matt?
Just, I, there may be some, some strategies that you could employ now to be responsive to that concern. You know, speaker, speaker phone, maybe we could allow, create an opportunity for people to, you know,
Call in?
Call in during public comment if they want, you know, so there, there may be some thing. And now I'm remembering more about where we left off because I think the thought for the new facility is that you might actually want to build in technology that would allow you to have these hybrid meetings where members of the public could choose to either come in person or appear like on a Zoom meeting up on the screen. And that's, I've actually seen that now in Sun Prairie, and they did spend, I think, a fair amount of money putting that system in place. But I've seen it work. And, you know, you have the screens up and it, people who want to appear virtually at a public hearing, for example, they're on the screen and it's pretty close to as if they were at the table there. pretty close to as if they were at the table there, in terms of that back and forth, real-time dialogue, it can happen, but you don't have the technology to do that in this room at this point, and I, so that, and that's kind of where we left off, with how you, what else, well, how do you solve that problem?
I, I think we were going to write some sort of policy for the hybrid meeting once we're in the new building, which is coming, I mean.
Yeah.
I just wanted us to be aware that the numbers are going up and, and be ready to go virtual if we decide we need to, and, you know.
All right, so let's, let's resolve the, the current issue at hand here, whether or not we're going to retain, well, you know, I'm looking for a motion as to do, are we going to retain the current guidelines, and then the other piece is the, are we going virtual, or are we going to go, stay in person? So that's what I'm looking for, we, we need to resolve this.
Set two motions, Randy?
Well, it can be, it can be in one, right?
So, I would say, so my recommendation would, i- if you don't want to, if you want to stay in person, a motion to approve the presented policy without virtual meetings.
Okay. All right, so Derek made it first, Luke, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
What are we voting on? I was kind of distracted there for a sec.
The, the current guidelines that Martin presented to us, without the, without the virtual meeting piece.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, so we have, we have a motion with second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, passes?
So who, who moved that one?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we are on 10, uh, 10, what am I, what is it? 10A? 10A?
But I thought we had to vote on whether we're doing, being in person or virtual. I thought that was a separate thing from what we were.
We made it into one.
Oh. Can I change my vote?
Sure.
I'm going to say nay on that one.
Okay.
Then I'm good. Thanks.
All right, 10, 10A is new business, preliminary discussion of policy objectives and provide, and we have copies of chapter one and two of the village code, the board members to begin review, and Martin, I don't think you're, you're not looking for deep discussion tonight, you just wanted to give this to us so we can take it back, go into it, see what changes we would like to present, and this will come up, up to us again?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so my, my thought here is, you know, this was one of the goals that the board wanted to work on, was, was doing an in-depth review of chapters one and two of the village code, so they are both in the packet, so you can start looking at those and thinking about potential changes that you would want to make, or some questions that you might have. I know there's a few things that have come up over the last couple of months regarding committee structure, term limits for citizen employees, meeting times, hybrid meeting rules, and then establishing some different committees that were based on some of the things we talked about during the goals. So I, I think it would be helpful for the board to just take some time and look through the two chapters here, see what they're all about, and then we'll come back at a future meeting and, and talk about some of the things that, some of the ideas, some questions you might have, some things that you would like to see incorporated. I know, I, I talked to Amanda earlier today about the public transportation committee idea, and, uh, talking with her about, you know, when we come back, it would be a good idea to have, okay, this committee, what is its purpose, what is it going to do, is it going to be an ad hoc committee, is it going to be a permanent committee, what is its membership going to look like, is it going to be all village board members or citizen committee? So start thinking about all those different things as it relates to some of the ideas that you might have, and then we can come back and we can talk about those things, and of course there's, you know, the policymaking part of it, and then there's also the legal part of it, is it legal? And then, of course, is it practical, can we, can we manage it internally? So all those things have to be kind of married together at some point, and we'll be able to eventually put all those ideas and create a new draft of, of these chapters to, to further some of these goals, so.
Okay.
That's all I was looking for for this one.
I mean, I don't know about the, I, I need more time myself, there, there's a lot here, and I'd like to really spend some time going through that, so. So no, no action for that, Martin? Just take it home and start looking at it, one and two. All right, then, we're just about done? 10B is the 20, 22 budget kickoff from process information, and Martin, I'll just say, I like, I like what you provided, it sort of gives us a framework and, you know, what, how we should be thinking about the, some of us have gone through the budget, but how we should be sort of be approaching the budget, and what things are consistent typically from year to year, and kind of what we should focus on, so. Anybody else have any, I think it's informational, it's good information as we sort of start to gear up for that, so.
Yeah, I just really wanted to, to provide some background and a baseline, we're going to get into this process, and Ellers will be at the next meeting to present the first ever financial management plan, so that'll be cool, and, yeah, budget will start.
All right. Get ready, because they're coming. Some of us have been through them, so. All right, 12 is future agenda items. Anything for board members? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, following up on Elise's memo in here, or I'd like to propose that we ask the planning commission to start addressing text amendments to deal with the proposals that Elise and Vandewell came up with in the affordable housing report.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got.
Yeah, Derek?
Well, I discussed a idea with Martin a little bit earlier, to, I'd like to look into the feasibility of a project to work with the nonprofits. Came to me for the fire department on a roundup project where the community members can decide to round their utility bills up to the nearest five or $10, and donate that to either the fire department, my initial thought was the fire department, but then maybe expand to the senior center and police department, just to see if that was feasible from a staffing standpoint, and what would need to be changed to implement something like that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, 13, we've been waiting for it, here it is, adjournment. Amanda?
Yeah.
In a second. Luke? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're finished, thank you.